All right, hello, good evening, everybody. This is October 8th, 2025. This is the regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and can we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Ettinger, can you take the roll call, please?
Eric Brooks.
Here.
Natalie Gren.
Here.
Thomas Harland.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Anthony Snobia.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And, Mrs. Ettinger, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We're going to begin tonight with bright lights, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Seibert.
All right, well, we are excited to feature Waukesha North this evening. First, before our friends from Waukesha South, and Mr. Plitzelwhite, our Athletic Director, will be coming to the podium. Oh, yeah. Oh, no worries, no worries. We'll be ready for you next. Thank you for being here, Mr. Plitzelwhite. And what we're excited to celebrate tonight, and it's a little bit late, but it doesn't mean it's any less meaningful, is that in their last year in the Classic Eight Conference, Waukesha North was recognized as the Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award winners. So it's a really tremendous honor for Waukesha North. And I just wanted Mr. Plitzelwhite to be able to come and recognize him, recognize his leadership of North Athletics, and let him say a few words about what that means to North in finishing so strong in the Classic Eight.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. And before I begin, I just, fresh off the golf course, I want to announce very proudly to this group that our Waukesha Golf, Girls Golf Program qualified for state today as a team for the first time since '06. So congratulations to them. So as Dr. Seibert mentioned, yeah, we were awarded the Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award for the 2024-2025 school year, and to me, it helps signify a commitment to education-based athletics that the School District of Waukesha has and the Waukesha North High School community has. For our student athletes, coaches, and families that support North, there's a sense of pride that runs deep within our school culture, transcends individual teams, seasons, and rivalries, and the wins and losses that often define the sport. Unlike a single-conference championship trophy, this accomplishment reflects the consistent behavior of every athlete, coach, parent, and fan across every single competition over the course of a full school year. Voted on by coaches in the Classic Eight in every sport that we offer, it's a powerful and meaningful statement that Waukesha North prioritizes respect, fairness, and grace in both victory and in defeat. Moving forward, I'm hopeful that this recognition does not just honor the past behavior, but it also helps set a high standard for the School District of Waukesha and the North community, proving that we can achieve competitive success while maintaining an unwavering reputation for outstanding sportsmanship. I want to thank every coach, every student athlete, every fan, and everyone involved in Waukesha North High School for their efforts in receiving this recognition.
Congratulations. Any comments or questions for Mr. Plitzelwhite?
Mrs. Voight? I think it's noteworthy that there are two North Stars on the current Journal Sentinel Piggly Wiggly Student of the Month, or Student of the Week athletic recognition, so that not just good sports, but good athletes as well.
Yes, thank you. Please vote.
Every hour.
Well, and maybe just to wrap up, so before next month's November board meeting, we'll do our Fall Athletics and Club Activities recognition downstairs in 111, 113. And then we certainly will be excited to welcome the golf co-op up to the boardroom too, and we'll recognize them for their state appearance, and who knows what might come from that state appearance, so we're excited to see that too. So thank you for joining us. All right, thank you.
Congratulations. All right, now we are ready for our report by our student representatives, and we welcome Madison Cable and Sam Lim from South High School. Welcome.
I apologize, everybody, for our earlier inconvenience. Hello, everybody. My name is Sam Lim, this is Madison Cable. We are one of your, your two Waukesha South representatives here to talk about why South is probably one of the best schools in Waukesha. So we'll get right into it.
Hello, I'm Madison. I am the Student Council Public Relations Officer. I am in many certain clubs, such as leadership clubs, such as Link Crew, which we'll talk about later, and I'm in many of the arts, such as theater and choir.
Hi, guys. My name is Sam Lim. I am your Waukesha South Student Council President. Just to, we'll cut through all the riffraff of all that on there. I am one of your avid students, and I am one of your members of your Waukesha South Engineering Preparatory Academy, so I represent almost 90% of our school, other than our dual-language program. So on to our amazing academics. I'd like to recognize Jack Windesh, a good friend of mine, who is one of our National Merit semifinalists. For those of you who do not know, this is an extremely prestigious award handed out to only 1% of all national students within the United States. It's an extremely prestigious award in which you have to score extremely high on your pre-SAT, and I'd like to congratulate him on what he's done.
And at South, we have many intelligent students. 56% of all students last school year achieved high honor roll or honor roll, and 421 of those students achieved high honor roll, and 179 achieved honor roll.
Something new here we have at Waukesha South is our STEP program, which is Students Towards Empowered Pathways. So this is basically where we bring in some extremely, I don't want to say well-known, but people who are well-liked within their fields, and they are able to talk about what they do and help potentially lead students towards potentially their career path, or how they can empower students to potentially take those career paths.
And this school year, we also have a new incentive program for students. They are the new Stay Classy Black Shirt Raffle Tickets. So if a teacher sees a student doing things that good students do, such as paying attention in class, participating, using the phone caddy, they can get a raffle ticket in which they write their name on it and then put it into their grades box, and every Friday, three students from each grade get pulled out, and then they can choose some prizes at the welcome desk.
All right, so on to our athletics and activities. First up, we have our Girls Track and Field. Last year, we had four girls who qualified for their, for our sectionals, one of our most difficult regionals within the state. We had one sophomore qualify and travel to the state competition, and we hope to have several more this season.
And our Black Shirt Players, we won a bunch of Jerry Awards this year, and if you don't know what the Jerry Awards are, it's a statewide program in which a bunch of Jerry Award observers come to different musicals, and they rate them, and then they choose different awards. And we got many different awards, such as Outstanding Scenic Design, Stage Crew, and Ensemble, and we got to have two Spirit Award winners, Amalia Waltz and Jinx Wassley, in which they got to perform with a bunch of other Spirit Award winners in a group performance, and then we had an outstanding leading performance from Yaslin, and she had a solo in front of everyone who was there.
I'd like to mention that our South team is doing great this year. We had a big win over New Berlin West, South two, and New Berlin West one.
And our Cheer program, we also had a bunch of volunteers that were a part of Cheer got to volunteer at the Hope Center Green Powered Garden, and with a bunch of bonding activities, such as bowling, and we also raised over $1,000 at the food pantry at the Waukesha Farmers Market.
So next up, we have March Fest. This will be the 35th year of March Fest. This is an extremely big competition in which well over 25 high schools come and participate. We have well over, potentially, 13,000 to 15,000 students on the field at a time performing their wonderful, wonderful music. It is a great opportunity that South is able to host this, and all the funds and/or donations that we fundraise throughout the program help support our band programs here at South.
And our Boys Cross Country take first, and South wins the LCL Invite.
So Youth Night, this was, I believe, the week before homecoming. We had 70 more or more youth cheerleaders perform. We had a big team up with the North Youth Cheer Team, and we also had a small win over North that year, so.
And we have a new club this year, starting in September, French Club, and I believe we had around nine students attend for the first meet, and they learned about French culture, had a bunch of French snacks, and got to build an Eiffel Tower out of spaghetti noodles and marshmallows.
One of our big programs here is SALT, which is Student Academic Leadership Team. This is a big program here at South that got started, I want to say, maybe two or three years ago. It is probably one of our best out-and-about clubs. It stands for, sorry, it's basically all of our academic leadership athletic team captains who come and work with a bunch of students. We do a bunch of activities, including volunteer service, community service, and really helping out the Waukesha community.
And for some of our honorable mentions, this summer, we had to prepare our staff for the upcoming school year, talking about our SDW Cares program, the obvious raffle ticket incentive program, and just getting them organized for the school year.
School Board, I'd like to thank you deeply for the new HVAC system. As a student athlete myself, someone who is up in the weight room, in the summer, when it's like 108 degrees down, up in that weight room, and I'm coming out looking like a Quick Trip glazed donut, it's not a fun experience, I'll tell you that, so I deeply appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. Moreover, our Senior Sunrise, this is a tradition here at South in which seniors are able to come out and hang out on the football field. They kind of just hang out, have a good time, people bring snack. It's basically like a big morning picnic, a lot of fun.
And me and Sam are both in Link Crew, and if you don't know what Link Crew is, it's basically a bunch of upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, they get to sign up, and it's a huge leadership program. And before the school year starts, we have this thing called Freshman Orientation, where a bunch of freshmen come, and it's a big event where there's a bunch of activities. We tour the school, and we just make sure it's a nice welcoming environment for freshmen to come into the upcoming school year.
A big thing here at South is our South Fest. This is basically like, almost like our South Carnival. It's a lot of fundraisers, and it also helps support the popularity of South. One of our big things this year was we had a staff dunk tank in which I got to dunk some of my favorite teachers. Lot of fun, I definitely enjoyed it. Moreover, we had inflatables and an ice cone truck that came in, helped out support South Fest.
And this year, we had our Dress Campaign. I believe it's been going on for the past two years, and basically, it normally is during South Fest, but unfortunately, one of the students that ran it had to go off to college, but her mom was gracious enough to do it one last time. And basically, it gives students opportunities to get free dresses before homecoming, and I believe we gave away around 80 dresses in the two hours that it was running, and all the rest got to be donated to Children's Hospital.
I'd like to touch on our Homecoming Prep Rally. As our amazing Athletic Director, Mr. Schreier, said, there's nothing like a Waukesha South Prep Rally. The pep rally, I know myself, from freshman to now, still holds its excitement year after year. It's a wonderful experience, and it, in my opinion, it gets me excited for the school year. Me and Madison helped set it up this year, so we had a lot of fun performances. We had our Cheer and Dance team who came out and performed, our band performed. We also had our Man Palms, as I call them, who basically, a bunch of our seniors come out and do their own dance routine. We had a lot of fun games, such as Tug of War and Box Stacking, which is a new one that we had this year. Just a whole lot of fun, hoping to get the student body extremely excited for this year.
And our 2025 Homecoming Dance Court. We had a bunch of people on the court this year, including many nominees that were chosen by the student body, that were all voted upon, and that's what you see on the court there.
I'd like to thank you all for listening, for this amazing presentation, and I'd like to appreciate you all for hearing us out. So thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm guessing we have some questions and comments. I'm just going to kick us off by acknowledging, you guys are the first students to speak to us this school year. We're only five weeks into the school year, and what you're covering and celebrating is just so incredible, so there's been so much going on. You did a really good job of sharing that with all of us. There's first time for everything. I think this is the first time we've ever been thanked by a student for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, but.
Thank you so much again.
Very memorable moment for all of us, I'm sure, so glad to finally see that come through, it was long overdue. What questions or comments do members of the board have? Mrs. Voight?
I was able to participate in March Fest, and just an amazing event to see all those very talented students participating from schools all over the state, and to realize that it was pulled off when the band director had changed, not that long before this event was taking place. I think truly, truly an accomplishment, and a lot to be said for the parents and the, you know, the band boosters that made that happen as an ongoing event for years and years. It's truly a Waukesha tradition, so very, kudos for that success.
Mrs. Koenig?
Thank you. You guys are both just a delight to listen to. I have to, the excitement every time I see and hear South students is just incredible. You can tell you are so excited about your school and the pride that, you know, everybody has. It's really, it's so heartwarming to see. I really appreciate that. For South Fest, I was also there, and I have to tell you, when we were walking out, a lot of people that weren't from South, but were from all over the area, were commenting on what a nice facility it was and how nice, this is their favorite, you know, exhibition, you know, their experience, their competition. It was neat to see so many different schools, you know, and parents say that. So, you know, you may not know how high of a regard you're held, but you are from schools all over the area, so that's all, you know, I didn't say anything, but I kind of felt very proud by that, knowing that the region knows what a jewel that you have there at South, so.
Anybody else? Well, I know we have a lot of school year ahead for you guys, so we'll look forward to seeing you again in a few months, and thank you for all of the updates. You guys both did a really good job.
Perfect, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, we are now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have 16 speakers who signed up tonight. Because there are more than six speakers, each individual will be limited to three minutes in their comment. We will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes to begin to wrap up. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium should be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. I will announce the speaker, and the speaker who will follow that individual, just so that you can be prepared. Appreciate everyone's willingness to adhere to the time, and to the extent that we can minimize any of the applause, we can get through this most efficiently. So we will begin tonight with Erin Mack, and Erin will be followed by Sarah Withers.
All right. Hi, I'm Erin Mack. I actually am not prepared to speak at all. I didn't intend on it when I came here, but after speaking with some of the other parents, we all kind of feel the same way. I have two kids at Hawthorne, happy, healthy, they're getting a wonderful education, but it seems like a lot of these options are either geared around financial or racial lines, and it's a little disconcerting. And it also came to my attention that tonight, there was a third rejection for an interpreter, and I personally don't see the reasoning behind that. I feel like you're either obfuscating or limiting people's ability to advocate for themselves. That's pretty much it. I know. That's all I got. Like I said, I was unprepared, so.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Withers, followed by Rachel Clare.
Hi, my name is Sarah Withers, and I'm a special education teacher and a parent of three children in the Waukesha School District. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern regarding the conversion of Las Paul Middle School to a K-38 STEM school, and urge you to consider the profound impact this decision would have, not only on the broader school community, but especially on students receiving special education services. Las Paul Middle School is more than just a building. It's a vital education environment where students, staff, and families have built meaningful relationships, stability, and a sense of belonging. The school has a longstanding reputation for inclusive practices and fostering a learning environment that supports academic, emotional, and social development for all students. For students with special education needs, consistency and familiarity are critical. These students thrive when they are supported by educators who understand their unique learning styles, and when they have access to tailored resources that meet their learning goals. Disrupting the structure risks creating setbacks in progress that can take years to recover from. As part of the reorganization progress, I strongly urge you to prioritize strategies that ensure the continuity of support, including maintaining current staff and service teams wherever possible, ensuring adequate dedicated space and resources for sensory needs, quiet rooms, and specialized learning, including physical occupational and speech therapy, involving families, special education, PT, OT, speech, and transportation, and transition planning. Committing to small class sizes by implementing hard caps and class size limits, as every current classroom, of which I have firsthand knowledge, is over the proposed capacity of 22 to 25 students. Transparently communicating the data and facts upon which decisions are being made, so that all stakeholders have access to the same information, minimizing misinformation, general panic, and speculation. Consideration of bus routing to minimize the length of students' commute, and being mindful of how early students are being picked up. My current neighborhood middle school bus pickup is 6:41 a.m. My special ed student gets on the bus at 6:30, and we live 10 minutes from Las Paul. Decision-makers need to spend enough time in district buildings to get to know the students and staff and see learning in action, what's currently working or not working, and where to make changes to improve student outcomes and staff satisfaction. Directing fundings from buildings to having full-time special education assistance and providing these employees with benefits. We're losing qualified individuals to neighboring districts because they need insurance. Without proper aid support, I can't do my job. I ask you to weigh the financial challenges the district is facing against the long-term educational and emotional impacts that closing middle schools district-wide and converting Las Paul to a K-38 STEM school would have on the most affordable members of our school. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Clare, followed by Janina Cruz.
In 2022, when we were expecting our daughter, we moved to Waukesha. The housing market being what it is, we had a lot of things on our wish list, but not a ton of hard and fast requirements, but we managed to find a place that's almost perfect. We have a picture window in the front and a crab apple tree in the back, and most importantly, we're two blocks away from Hawthorne Elementary. My wife and I both walked to school when we were little, and it was really important for us to be able to offer our child that same experience of independence and responsibility. Our little girl is almost three now, and she already knows the way to the Hawthorne Playground. We've gone to Hawk Fest the past two years, and we've bought wreaths and Girl Scout cookies from Hawthorne students. This year, I became an Assistant 4-H Leader for the Hawthorne Club. I'm giving up every Monday afternoon for the whole school year, even though my daughter is too young for school. This community is really important to us, and we want to see it thrive. And I'm here tonight, even though my daughter is not yet in school, because I want to make clear to the board that closing Hawthorne would not only affect current students, families, and staff. We weren't even made aware of the potential foreclosure through any official channels. I got this flyer, not postmarked, stuck in my mailbox, to inform me about this meeting. And I didn't have any opportunity to participate in previous public comment periods, but I'm definitely here to participate now. If declining enrollment is the board's concern, I don't know how closing schools is going to encourage more young families to raise children within the Waukesha School District, or encourage the ones who are already here to stay. If educational quality is the board's concern, I don't understand how downsizing the dual-language program will improve learning outcomes, especially for English language learners who already face significant barriers to having their educational needs met. The logistics of getting 400 or more students in Hawthorne's current catchment to another school when the district already struggles to hire enough bus drivers seems daunting at best, and I can promise you, as someone who had to move schools several times as an elementary school student, that forcing young kids to switch schools and forcing their families to totally rethink the logistics of their lives is nothing short of traumatic. We are so, so lucky that we found a quiet, affordable neighborhood surrounded by other young families, but the center of that neighborhood is Hawthorne Elementary, and I'm worried about my daughter's future and the future of this community if that center is shut down.
30 seconds.
I hope you'll consider the broader impact these proposed school closures will have on families. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Janina Cruz, followed by Kristin Hesley.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janina Cruz. I am a sophomore at Waukesha West High School. When we emerged in 2019, our school community was broken. They told us that Blair was just a building, and our community would be okay at Hawthorne. Our new community did not accept our Spanish speakers. Monolingual teachers and students told us not to speak Spanish and didn't welcome our culture. It was tough. I vividly remember hating Hawthorne and going to school, not feeling accepted as a dual-language student. The feeling of unwantedness that I experienced in the fourth grade was not okay, and that's exactly what's going to happen to kids across the district when they move to different schools. I have now spoken twice in school closings, and once, twice in school closings, once when Blair was closing, and now we are, when we are attacking the Hawthorne family. Nothing seems to change. After years of hard work, our school community is now a family, accepting all cultures and is unified. This is still my school community. My younger brother attends Hawthorne, is in the first grade, fifth grade, in the dual-language program. I constantly volunteer at Hawthorne in the many programs and events that we have. Our family engagement this year has increased significantly, so significantly. Our families are volunteering almost daily and are involved in the children's learning. Our Hawthorne 4-H Club is the only after-school club in our SDW Elementary Schools. After four years, it has grown so much. We started with four volunteers, and now, in our fourth year, we have over 50 volunteers. It is run 100% on parent and student volunteers, including myself. Our Hawthorne 4-H Club gives scholars the opportunity to free enrichment activities like archery, crocheting, arts and crafts, leadership development, and recording announcements, Lego STEM, and many more activities. Again, run 100% on volunteers, and closing our school would immensely change this flourishing program. Our amazing specialist team brings culture from all over the world, including guests, speakers, and performers. Closing Hawthorne would affect our community, just like when Blair closed. We would be restarting all over again. Our building has had upgrades, including an elevator and lift, to make it ADA accessible. We currently have one scholar who attends in a wheelchair and is able to travel throughout the entire building. If electricity is out, he is able to exit out of door 13 from his classroom. Many of our Spanish-speaking families had no idea all these changes were happening to our district. This news, though, this news came out after school had ended in June, and even though we made an attempt to fulfill families, it didn't work because we weren't in person. In our Hispanic culture, we are not taught to communicate virtually. Almost all of our Hispanic families do not know how to use IC or email. Some don't even know how to use their phones. This is the reality in creating, and it creates a barrier when the district sends news, and optimizing our future via email. We had to advocate for Spanish-only sessions. Those were not attended, well, because of our political climate. This is our reality. The biggest part of our school family is Hispanic and cannot represent themselves the same way as other schools. Que viva la familia de Hawthorne!
Thank you, Janina. The next speaker is Kristin Hesley, followed by Zoila Martinez.
Hello, my name is Kristin Hesley, and I am the proud alumni of Waukesha Schools. I am also a mother of two sons who currently attend Lowell Elementary. When my oldest started kindergarten, I didn't have a lot of experience with Lowell. I didn't go there, I didn't know what to expect. But from the first day he went to kindergarten and jumpstart, we fell in love with the school. My youngest just started 4K at Lowell. It's been an adjustment for him. It's been an adjustment for him. We've had multiple tears, struggles already. But with the help of his teachers, speech therapists, paraprofessionals, and principal, we've worked together. We've got a plan. He is now thriving. He is excited to go to school every morning. It's only October. As a school dedicated to helping the deaf and hard-of-hearing and special ed in early childhood, Lowell has some very specialized resources that cannot be replicated at other schools. Some of these include three built-in sound booths for direct classroom use, a gym with a sound system that connects directly to student cochlear implants, a dedicated fenced playground with turf-like grass for safety for the 4K, DHH, and early childhood students. Lowell has another fenced playground built in 2024, funded entirely by community partnerships and Lowell families. It serves students with multiple needs and high-need backgrounds and very diverse students. 24% receive special education services. 51% qualify for free lunch. On top of that, an additional 8% qualify for reduced lunch. As a communications officer for the PTO at Lowell, many members of Lowell community have reached out to me with words. I want to highlight a few things for you guys tonight. Our building is in excellent shape, up to code, fully safe for staff and students. As a parent, that safety is non-negotiable. For some students, sure, they can attend another school, a dance, within a reasonable amount of time. For a big chunk of our students, however, this would cause a break in trust and the feeling of safety they so desperately depend on to further their education. Taking away Lowell would be more than just selling a building. In my opinion, you are disrupting a community that cannot be replicated. My son's favorite shirt is his Lowell Leopard shirt. He could wear it every day if he could. He also sleeps with his Lowell Leopard stuffy every night. All kids who go to Lowell are lucky, and they leave better than what they entered. I understand there is no right answer in this decision, and not everyone can be happy. I just hope that all the populations at hand are being considered for the true impact that it would have on them. We invite you to come walk our halls, sit in our classroom, watch the joy on these faces of the students as they learn and grow. Let them be voices to guide your decision. Our children deserve better than closure. They deserve investment, support, and hope. Please don't close this school. Don't let it become a memory. Don't let the heartbeat stop.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zoila Martinez, followed by Helen Bishara.
Buenas noches, miembros de la junta. Mi nombre es Zoila Martinez. Soy madre de un estudiante de primer grado en Hawthorne, the dual-language. When my oldest was born, I decided that I only wanted to speak to her in English for the sake of my husband, because I wanted him to feel included in what I was saying to our daughter. My parents, indigenous people who didn't get to go to school ever, they taught me I needed to include people, not to leave them, not to make them feel left out. Esta es la tercera reunión y seguimos sin ser escuchados los hispanos. Nuestras ideas no parecen importar. Nuestros niños no parecieran tener el mismo valor y derechos de un niño no hispano. Me siento cansada, estoy frustrada. La otra noche vi pocas juntas con mi hija de 13 años. Me recordó lo que muchos de mis antepasados indígenas, niños obligados a olvidar su idioma y su cultura, a ser obligados a aprender y hablar un solo idioma, el inglés. Hoy, con el cierre de Hawthorne y el acceso limitado del programa dual-language, parece que la historia se repite otra vez. Se le está quitando a nuestros hijos la oportunidad de aprender en dos idiomas, de abrazar a su cultura y su educación, y hacer más. Cuando cerraron Blair en el 2018, el 68% de la población era hispana. Hawthorne, ahora en 2025, es una de las comunidades hispanas más grandes que tiene el distrito. Este patrón que ustedes están siguiendo es muy preocupante. Hemos presentado datos que se contradicen lo que se ha dicho. El señor Seabird, usted mencionó que Hawthorne es difícil de acceder por sus niveles, pero el edificio tiene elevador y tiene salvaescaleras. La accesibilidad no es el problema. En junio, ustedes mismos dijeron que Bethesda es menos segura y menos beneficiosa para el distrito, y ahora la presentan como una de las escuelas más seguras a la que yo tengo que mandar a mis hijos. Parece que la prioridad ha pasado de calidad a cantidad. Nuestros hijos merecen escuelas seguras, equitativas, y no aulas sobrepobladas. Y como muchos no respondieron a mi correo, les pregunto nuevamente: ¿Cuándo dejó de ser la seguridad de nuestros hijos una prioridad? Les pido que vean los datos reales, que piensen en la seguridad, equidad, y bienestar de cada niño. Nuestros hijos no son números, y su escuela no es solo un edificio. Gracias por su tiempo.
The next speaker is Helen Bishara, followed by Maria Hawkins.
Sorry if you hear the baby crying. It's bedtime. So, last meeting, I spoke about how disappointed I was in the board and the administration. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit, because three minutes isn't a lot of time, and nothing much in the last month has changed. And honestly, I was a little hesitant to come up here and speak again because it's felt across the last month that a lot of what I and a lot of other Hawthorne parents have had to say has fallen on deaf ears. As a group, we got together and emailed every single one of you with a list of names on one email. It was very efficient, and only a few of you guys responded, like even responded, to meet in person and get together. To those of you who met with us, thank you. You showed up, you listened. But it was very disappointing that the majority of you guys did not even respond to the email. And I remain disappointed for several other reasons as well. At one point across the last month, Hawthorne parents were advised that gathering more signatures on our petition might sway opinions. The comment was well-meant, like it came from a place of good intentions, but it revealed something deeper, that decisions may depend more on optics and pressure than on data and due diligence. And when I and other parents raised concerns at another meeting we had about Hawthorne's population being over 60% economically disadvantaged, at one point, we were met with "kids don't care about economics." That reinforced the sense of dismissal many of us have been feeling this past month. This isn't a partnership or transparency. It makes families feel invisible on decisions that affect them the most. And to make matters worse, a request was made in advance to have a translator here tonight, and it was once again denied. The Hispanic population was given the option to still speak in Spanish tonight and have it translated to you guys at a later time. And to me, that's not acceptable. Parents who are of another language deserve to be able to speak to you guys in real time, just like I'm doing right now, and have this conversation in real time, not have it be translated later. With all that said, I want to make it clear that Hawthorne understands, like us as a group of parents who have gotten together. Well, I'll just skip to the end then, because... Pretty much, I want to ask you guys to pause and slow down. Commission independent impact studies, because you guys haven't done impact studies at all. If the plan truly serves students and taxpayers, it should welcome scrutiny. If it can't, then it's not vision, it's a gamble. So do your due diligence and get it right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Hawkins, followed by Paul Reese.
All right. I hope you are having a good week, and thank you for your time. I'm a school district of Waukesha Hawthorne parent. I'm going to be honest, I had prepared something completely different to say tonight, but that was before I found out that our request for an interpreter for part of this meeting was denied. At last month's board meeting, about a third of the families were primarily Spanish speakers, and a mom was actually denied interpretation. This time, our Spanish speakers have tablets, but since it's Google Translate, there are already a lot of inaccuracies. We also don't get to actually converse with you. It's a one-way form of communication. All of these proposals disproportionately affect us, the Hispanics in Waukesha. And yet, we have had to advocate at each stage for translation. Translating material after the fact simply isn't enough because it sends the message that the affected families are an afterthought, not a priority, and we can't participate in discussion or make contributions the same way. Furthermore, it has been asked throughout this process, why didn't we hear more from Hawthorne and Lowell families over the summer? And the simple answer is, we didn't know. Due to a combination of economics and translation concerns, these families were not in the loop. 60% of Hawthorne families are economically disadvantaged, and 54% of us are Hispanic. 50% of Lowell families and 38 of Bethesda families are also economically disadvantaged. And that matters for any changes we make in the district. So we need to make a point of including those families in discussion in a way that works for them. For those families who speak Spanish, work first and second shift, have transportation and technology challenges. They are the families most affected by the proposals, so we should understand how these proposals affect them, not make it an afterthought. But we should be hopeful, because these are things that the school district of Waukesha can fix and already has the capability to fix, so let's fix them. At the next board meeting for future listening sessions, let's have an interpreter. But they do highlight a bigger issue with this process. Do we need to make big changes? Yes. Are those changes going to be difficult? Yes. And that is precisely why we need to do a thorough job in this process. So we ask you to either bring in a consultant or consultant group to independently run numbers to ensure things are being done accurately, properly, and completely. Process matters. If we do a poor job at the process, we are going to have a poor result. So let's make sure we do things right now. Hawthorne is an incredible school and has so many programs connected to the site, and it is a neighborhood school. In addition to the dual-language program, we are the only school in the district with a prior restoration and ADA-accessible path and learning space. We haven't continued to have school gardens. We have a childcare grant, which provides free after-school care to our families, and we have the 4-H program and many, many other partnerships. The only thing the school lacks is one ramp for accessibility, which we have the capability to fix. But you know what? All of our elementary schools serve incredible functions, and that is precisely why the board should continue to request alternative proposals and make changes to the existing one. Let's move sixth grade back to elementary school. Let's sell Saratoga. Let's redistrict, and then see how that changes capacity and go from there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Marta Aparicio.
Good evening. First, I'd like to commend this board for its commitment to transparency and the optimizing the future plans for this district. Unlike Wawatosa, who just shut down its STEM this past spring like that. It didn't have any discussion because the evidence wasn't on their side. The favor of doing it wasn't on their side. They just did it to put students where they needed them, to up their grade, their scores, and other schools. So they just shut down their STEM program, a highly successful and beloved STEM program like here in Waukesha, with no discussion. This board has made it clear that it wants to be transparent, that it wants the discussion. It doesn't need to be called racist for doing it. There's a need for it. We have half the amount of students in some of these schools that they're designed for. We get paid and financed per student, not per school. They're financed per student, so when you have half the amount of students and you have a declining enrollment, something's going to give. More than half of your children's school years will be spent other than elementary school. Most of us, I hardly remember elementary school. It is so insignificant to my life. It is significant to the learning, because it's the cornerstone, but as far as my life, it is a very insignificant fact. High school, on the other hand, is where you're really going to have fun. It's where you're really going to blossom and grow. There's all sorts of things to do in high school. It's where the majority, probably, of our budget is spent on our high schools. I know West used to be more than the other two high schools together to maintain. It is, high school's a blast. You're going to have all sorts of opportunities there if we keep our budgets in line. You know, our facilities are great compared to neighboring areas. They're great. Our swimming pool at South is probably the best in the state. So what's going to give is those things aren't going to be that way anymore. I would love to see us get new scoreboards. I'd love to see these things grow. But if we don't have the money, if we want to run schools half-empty, well, then we can give up somewhere else. We've done a great job with our curriculum, keeping on top of them, keeping our dual-language in line with our standard education programs in our elementary schools. We've made those moves. We've made those investments. And yet, you get yelled at constantly by just people with very negative comments about trying to do the right thing for their kids. I rode a school bus most of my life, from elementary through middle school. Finally, in high school, my dad moved over to north and I walked. But most of you, I know some of you, if your kids have ridden a bus all their life, did it hurt them? A lot of kids in this country in very successful districts do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marta Aparicio, followed by Ava Wilman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marta Aparicio. I'm in seventh grade at Butler. And today, I want to talk about something that affects all of us, middle school. There's been talk about getting rid of middle schools and moving students straight from elementary school to high school. But I believe that would be a huge mistake. Middle school isn't just a building. It's a bridge. It's where we grow from kids into young adults. It's where we learn not math and reading, but also who we are. Think about it. In elementary school, we just start to understand the world. In high school, expectations and pressure skyrocket. Middle school is in-between space where we can make mistakes, learn from them, and build confidence before things get serious. Without that step, students would go from coloring books to chemistry in just a year or two. That's not fair or realistic. Middle school also gives us a chance to explore. We try out electives, art, band, robotics, sports, and leadership clubs. These opportunities help us discover our passions early. Many high schoolers find what they love because they started experimenting in middle school. And let's not forget the social side, social side. Middle school helps us learn how to handle friendships, teamwork, and responsibilities in a safe environment. We learn what it means to be a part of a community. If we skipped a stage, students would be thrown into high school before they're ready, academically, emotionally, or socially. Keeping middle schools means keeping a space where growth happens naturally. It means giving students time to prepare what's next, instead of rushing them into something they're not ready for. So before anyone decides to erase middle schools, make sure it's safe to. And let's remember that what they really are, not a place to get through, but a place to grow through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ava Wilman, followed by Katie Danner.
Hi, my name is Ava Wilman. I go to Les Paul Middle School, and I'm in seventh grade. I hope you can reconsider shutting down Les Paul Middle School, because what we have here is something truly special that cannot be replaced. My principal, Mr. Bennett, and my vice principal, Mr. Carabon, and the entire staff work so well together. They are a strong team that truly cares about every single student. The teachers are strict in a way that helps us stay focused and succeed, not to punish us, but to bring out our best. They're always there when we need help, whether it's with schoolwork or something personal. I don't want them to have to worry about not having a job, because students deserve to have these amazing teachers. Mr. Bennett and Mr. Carabon are always available, walking in the halls, checking in classrooms, making sure classes are running smoothly. Les Paul Middle School is a community that has been carefully built over time with trust, respect, and friendships that have grown stronger every year. When I first came here, I really was struggling in math, but the teachers refused to let me fall behind. They worked with me until I understood everything, and they made sure I had the support I needed. The kind of care and commitment isn't something you need to find everywhere. I felt more welcomed and motivated to succeed in school when I'm at Les Paul. Replacing Les Paul Middle School would tear apart a place where students feel safe, supported, and inspired. We built so many meaningful friendships, and saying goodbye to these friendships would be heartbreaking. Please don't take away what so many people and students and teachers and staff have worked so hard to create. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Next up is Katie Danner, followed by Megan Goodled.
I am speaking to you tonight, not just as a Bethesda parent, or a Butler parent, or a Summit View Butler North Star alum, not just as a higher auntie and a Lowell auntie and the spouse of a Wolverine. I am speaking as someone who moved back from out of state. I am speaking as someone who moved back from out of state for the legacy of these schools, who marched at Macy's and the Tournament of Roses parades because of these schools, who has been an educator for over twenty years because of this district. Why do I give you this history? So that you understand that when I implore you to slow down, do an impact study, and approach this decision mindfully with a detailed, considered plan, it's not an off-the-cuff ask. I was part of the community that welcomed redistricted Rose Glenn kids in the nineties. I remember how lost they felt, how encroached upon we felt, and how hard our teachers had to work to integrate those communities. We know more about kids' mental health now, and as Maya Angelou said, "When you know better, it is incumbent upon us to do better." Do better for our kids because they are all our kids. It was never just save Bethesda. It was pay attention to our kids and have them at the center of whatever decision you make. Whatever decision this board makes will ripple across the district at all levels. Please, slow down, do your homework, take the time for an independent impact study. Take the time to make this a legacy we can all be proud of.
Thank you. Next speaker is Megan Goodled, followed by Vicky Smith.
In representing my family, I come before you in support of keeping Lowell open. We bought our first home back in 2019, right next to Blair. As a wonderful opportunity, we watched our eldest, Jay, attend school just outside our kitchen window. As a mom, it hurt my heart at times to see him look over and call for me, but I knew he was in good hands. I didn't know then of the heartache that would come when Blair would be revamped into the school admin building, and I would no longer get to watch my boys attend school, run around the playground, or make first friendships, all from the comfort of my home. Still, it is a memory I will cherish, but I wish it would have lasted a little bit longer, as my youngest, C, didn't get this chance. Jay then transferred to Lowell with his little brother eventually by his side, which brought me some peace. Before they came together, though, COVID happened. Jay was once again disrupted in his learning and environment. We made the best of it, at least I knew they were safe. As we returned to our new normal, C was ready to attend school. C has an IEP, and nervous as I was for him, every teacher and aide at Lowell warmed my heart. They supported him in this venture that no longer existed beyond our window or within our home. Lowell is amazing with incredibly dedicated staff who get to know your children, teach them, and care for them in the way you hope one can. Closing any school is unfortunate, but please don't close Lowell. These kids have already adjusted to enough change. And I understand the change at hand is meant for the expected smaller class sizes, but initially, we will likely see the opposite. Will our children still receive the same attention and dedication, dedicated support that they need with larger class sizes? Or will the staff, or will the staff need to spread their time even more thin? What of the staff? What supports are in place for them to accommodate a larger class with more students who require additional assistance in their learning? What of the need for transportation that already seems difficult to maintain?
Thirty seconds.
What of the overcrowding at drop-off and pickup that will occur with an influx of students? Lastly, has anyone thought to ask the children? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vicky Smith, followed by Melissa Toledo.
Good evening. I am here to speak on behalf of Lowell and the other families at Lowell. I've been part of the PTO and involved with the school since I started there back in 2019. I have worked with several of you even when it came to getting the new playground. I would love Lowell to stay open. Your clock hasn't started, by the way.
Sorry.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Just being there, entering my time as PTO president and PTO treasurer, seeing the legacies and the memories that have come through, like Bill Carpenter. Who else can get a gym named after them for being, you know, a stellar teacher? Very rarely. Not only that, but not, was I only there for that dedication, I was also there for the dedication of the new sound system that allows all of our DHH students to be involved during assemblies and everything else without the back sound coming in, and they can participate. They are included. You can't get that at any other school right now, not without substantial cost. Also, like the dedication of Ms. Salinas. She's got her own bench out underneath the tree facing the playground. Where other schools are you going to see the dedication from families where we have these things? That, and not just them, but the community as a whole, to fund our new playground. We struggled with a rusted-out playground that was truly falling apart, and then working with Mr. Clark to help get ideas on how to get a new playground. You guys have been awesome. And the fact that they've only had one year, maybe eighteen months with that, that's not enough time. And it's designed specifically for a lot of our students who don't have the mobility to be able to be mobile and play with their friends. We are a very inclusive school, and I can honestly say, as a mom who now has a son who is on the spectrum, that I have found my tribe. I have found my village. Lowell is impeccable for that. There are a lot of parents that find their village within Lowell to help their students become better, to help their kids, and to share resources. I now have a middle schooler, and I just remember middle school being a time of transition, like the students have said that spoke earlier. We need that as most children are not ready to go from elementary to high school. There's just not enough time for them to grow emotionally, socially, and on the, I don't know how to say it, but I think you get my meaning. Keeping middle schools open, or at least going from...
Thirty seconds.
You know, adding eighth grade to high school and keep them sequestered so that they can get used to it, help with the transition, then they're out with the public. I remember going to high school, going from a small, you know, one classroom to a larger middle school, and then to high school where I got lost on my first day, and I got lost several times that first week. They need more time in order to understand how high school works, and middle school is very important to that transition. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Melissa Toledo, followed by Nancy Aranda.
Thank you for the time to speak for the fourth time. For those who don't know me, my name is Melissa Toledo, or Toledo, and I'm a proud mom of a dual-language kindergarten at Bethesda. For a little over a month, I've been working as a dual-language teacher's aide, and in doing so, I have more wonderings specific to how we are optimizing our future. Almost thirty percent of the class I work with has been or is being evaluated for possible special education support, thirty percent. This made me wonder, at this, at what pace is a district seeing the sped population grow year over year? Is this continuous growth being considered in these plans? And if so, how? Especially when you consider vital OTPT rooms, which I was in today helping a student, or sensory rooms and so on. Only certain schools have those. There seems to be a shortage also of sped resources and teacher aides, especially Spanish-speaking individuals. I understand this might be a statewide or even nationwide issue. However, as we want to optimize our future, what is the school district doing and how can they make these roles more attractive? How can the district and parents ensure sped and Spanish resources are of high quality? Or that IEPs are being met in classrooms? Or that language needs are being met? And if they're not, who is it that's being held accountable? Do people use 4K dual-language solely as a daycare, considering it's full day versus half-day? And if so, should the district consider certain changes to ensure families truly are committed to the program? Those are just new wonderings that I'm sure I will have more of over my next few weeks. Some additional data points I'll be emailing you all for after this as well are: population of children in special education programs at each school, broken down elementary, middle school, and high school over the last five years, and also, if possible, by the special education program type; number of current sped teachers and aides, split by only English speaking versus Spanish speaking, per school versus what the need is or requirement should be; ESL, which is for Spanish and dual-language population by each school over the last five years, to understand who is selecting which of those programs; number of children per school who transfer into or out of dual-language in kindergarten and first grade. I think those data points haven't been brought up yet, and they're very important to consider for these options. I'd also like to thank Mr. Tom Harland for touring Bethesda a few weeks ago...
Thirty seconds.
...alongside our principal. I saw him while I was outside of recess with my class. It's a night-and-day difference seeing these schools empty over the summer, which I believe many of you have, than what they are during a school day. So I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to tour with our principal and the other principals of the other schools to see firsthand how a lot of these students are receiving some amazing education and how it's going to be impacted by these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Nancy Aranda.
So I don't speak English, but she's my translator. Yeah, I'm going to translate for her. So, uh, hmm. I don't know. The most important thing is the, the Spanish-speaking community? And the American people? To having, speaking two languages is extremely important in our community? And I understand that we are attacking the dual-language program? Because I've been informed in this? And you guys have said multiple schools? And now you guys have changed everything, and my son is now choosing or trying to decide what school he wants to go to? And now she's, she's representing the Hispanic community, and she doesn't know how to explain to everyone how everything is changing? And this is why we don't come to the meetings, because the tablets don't work correctly, the Google Translate isn't up to speed and isn't accurate, and we don't have a live translator. And it's important for us, our voice to be heard, because not only are we closing schools, but we're also, um, what's his name? It's not just important for us, it's also important for everyone else in this district. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening. Okay, we're going to quickly move into minute approval. We have three sets of minutes for your consideration tonight. We have September tenth, regular board meeting, September tenth, public hearing, and September sixteenth, executive session, which was an expulsion panel. Mrs. Voight?
I move that we approve all three sets of minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brooks. Any questions or modifications? Okay, Mrs. Eddinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig? Aye. Natalie Grant?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
David Wyatt?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye, passes nine-zero. We will move next into the WEF report given by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors met on October second. WEF recorded our, the Milwaukee Philanthropic Community Radio Show last month, and it is scheduled to run on Sunday, October nineteenth. The show airs on WISN 1130 on Sunday mornings at 10:00 a.m. Following the show, it will be available on many streaming platforms. Thanks to Ellen Becker Investments for inviting us, and to Blessings in a Backpack for joining us. Tune in if you can. The 2023 grant winners are submitting their grant reports. Watch our social media as we start sharing their project results. We are proud to share that 100% of our annual sponsors renewed this year, and we also had a few new sponsors join us. Special thanks to Generac, who just committed another $6,000 donation to our Classroom Connect program for 2027. We're always looking for more support. Who can you connect us with? Thank you to all of the SDW staff members who participate in the district's Casual for a Cause program. This program has already raised almost $10,000 this school year. Special thanks to Sue Eddinger, Mary Jo King, Dr. Seibert, and all of the building secretaries for making this program successful. We are so grateful. The annual WEF pie sale and year-end giving campaign is coming up. Get ready to order your delicious, elegant farmer pies, baked goods, and hams. Order dates are October 24th through November 2nd, with pickup on Thursday, November 20th at South. Special thanks to South High School and South Salt Program for offering to help us again this year. While last year, we provided gloves to the Christmas Clearing Council, this year, we will be providing weekend meals and partnering with Blessings in a Backpack. For every $50 straight donation to WEF, we will provide a weekend of meals for another SDW student through this great organization. Donors will be able to make this donation with our, with their pie orders or any time during the year-end giving campaign. Next up is the evening for education. We're at the helm, putting the finishing touches on our theme and getting ready to make waves. Any clue? You'll have to wait and see, but save the date for Wednesday, March 25th, at the Marriott. More info to be shared next month. Know a deserving individual, company, or organization that deserves to be recognized for their contributions in our community? Nominate them for the WEF Award. Don't delay. Nominations are due December 1st, 2025, and you can visit our website at waukeshaeducationfoundation.org and click on the awards link to learn more and nominate somebody today. Madam President, this concludes my WEF report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. All right, we are moving next into our last general business item, which is an update on optimizing our future long-range planning.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. Ms. Genderman is pulling up our slide deck, and our slide deck is the same as this colorful document that you have on your desk. I just want to begin by recognizing the cabinet for working on this with me, and we worked very well together, putting this together, and we're excited to present what you asked for at the last board meeting, which was a full analysis to the greatest extent possible on our newest options of E, F, and G. So, that's what we're going to do. We'll share this presentation amongst the cabinet, and you'll see that on the second page in the table of contents, we start with just a mission, the mission statement of the school district of Waukesha, as well as our long-range planning introduction. That was what we created back in March and really drove the entire process, right? Explaining it, putting that in the newspaper, putting that in other communications, including our community-wide newsletters, to really talk about, we have this great tradition of providing excellent education to our community, and we want to continue to do that at a very high level. However, the decline in the birth rate has impacted us like it's impacting school districts across Wisconsin and the United States. And where we once were over 13,000 students in 1213, we're now just under 10,500 and under 10,000 in terms of our brick-and-mortar facility students. So, we set out originally looking at a 10% to 15% reduction to match the number of facilities we have in the school district of Waukesha to the number of students that we have as we plan for the future. And ultimately, we have had a robust website... And ultimately, we have had a robust website that continues to get updated with all of these materials that we've presented to you, as well as presented throughout the summer and the spring when we did our nine information sharing sessions and our 26 gathering input sessions over the summer. So, we worked then to come to you in a workshop in September. We presented two new options, as you'll recall, that were E and F. Those were based on all of our listening, all of our shared experiences as a cabinet over the summer, listening to parents, listening to our staff, listening to community members, and also listening to you as a board. At that evening, you also asked us to create an option G, which we did and presented to you then at the last board meeting on September 10th. So, we have this three-phase process that we outlined back in March, with April and May the information sharing, May through October, which essentially was captain in June and July, was the gathering input phase, and now we find ourselves in the making a recommendation phase. We're not quite there yet, but we want to present these full analysis options to you and then answer any questions you have, figure out what other information could be helpful to you as we get closer to presenting a recommendation and looking for you to, if you're comfortable, make a decision. So with that being said, we'll start to walk through this document, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Pat and to Ms. Genderman to talk about the calendar of events that we've talked about in our recent committee meetings.
On this first page, here on page four, what we wanted to put together was a calendar of events. These are all things that typically happen during the school year, and with all of our work around optimizing the future, the dates have been adjusted. And so what we wanted to highlight is a little bit more detail beyond our open enrollment periods, just starting with our dual-language parent information nights. We'll have two of those, and they are slated for December as well as January. At the last Student Services meeting, Mr. Pat shared the school choice and charter application window. That will be January 5th through January 30th. And then moving on to other opportunities in January, we have open houses at our secondary schools. Our team has been working really hard to align this work and systematize this throughout our system. In addition, like years before, we have our before 4K Parent Night, and we also have our 4K enrollment application window with our lottery drawing, if needed, date set here as March 13th. As always, we have the State of Wisconsin Open Enrollment Application Window, which goes from February 2nd to April 3rd, and then our last event being March 13th that I had shared earlier about the 4K lottery. So what we wanted to share is regardless of any options, we wanted to lay out the calendar events so families have an opportunity to engage and get to schools, engage in those open house activities, and then prior to anything for next school year or the following school year.
Thank you, Ms. Genderman. So, all of those dates, as she explained, are bumped back, right, to give families time once these final recommendations and decisions are made to make the choices they need to make. We'll go on to the next slide, and these are some slides that you've seen before, just in order to set the stage again. So, we used this one where we showed you the birth rate over time, over a 20-year period from 2003 to 2023, and we showed you the United States up on the top in black. We showed you that Wisconsin is declining at a quicker rate than the United States, and that Waukesha County is besting that rate, right, which further exacerbates the challenge we have with the number of babies being born in the county, and ultimately then the number of students coming into our school district, other school districts, which is then also impacting the business community, right, with the amount of workers in the workforce. So, you're hearing about the birth rate now on a much more regular basis across the country and what that is meaning for lots of people. We also had a slide that we used in the information sharing sessions where we looked at a 20-year snapshot of our enrollment dating back to 2004, 2005 through 2425, and we showed that we went from just under 13,000 students to just under 10,000 students during that 20-year period. But the other thing that we talked about was that for that entire period, we were the seventh-largest school district in the state of Wisconsin, and we continue to be the seventh-largest school district in the state of Wisconsin, which tells you, we didn't put this slide in because you've seen it many times, but we are not alone, right? So all school districts are declining at that rate, particularly larger ones such as us. And so, that's how we maintain that seventh-largest school district ranking, because everybody continues to go down due to the decline in the birth rate. And then we have one of Mr. Clark's slides that where we show how we were at our high point, over just over 13,000 students in resident pupil count in 2012, and then last year, just over 10,500. And then in the bullet points to the right, this was one of the slides that we used, I believe, in August, where we talked about the cost of the status quo, right, and the cost of not taking any action as our enrollment continues to decline at about 2% per year. So, we showed in 2425 that we were at 9,675 students. We forecasted that 2% per year, which is proving true this year. We're down 2.1% for the '25, '26 school year. That would be another 10% by 2030, which would take us to 87, just over 8,700 students. We also talked about our structural deficit of $3 to $4 million, so we just took the conservative $3 million times five years, and that would mean we'd be making $15 million in budget reductions if we didn't take any action, trying to provide the same number of opportunities with additional rightsizing of employee groups through attrition and retirements. And if we did not take any action by 2035, and we went down another 10%, we'd be at 7,800 students in the school district of Waukesha. We'd have another $15 million or a total of $30 million in budget reductions with additional rightsizing of employee groups, which means by 2035, we'd essentially be the same size as the school district of Elm Brook, one of our neighbors, which has five elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. So, it's been our belief throughout this process, and we've tried to communicate that openly, that we have to take some action, in our opinion administratively, to rightsize the school district of Waukesha. And if we can do, take some of those actions, we're very confident that we can continue to provide the service level that we continually do. So now we're gonna move into what we're calling more of the full analysis, and we'll start with option E. And you'll notice we changed the name of option E to 4K5. We were having some questions from primarily staff when we were calling them K5 or K6 options of what was happening to 4K. 4K is an integral part of the school district of Waukesha, both in our schools and in our community partner sites, and so nothing changes with 4K, so we just pointed out that 4K will continue to be the great program that it is. So you'll see what we did in all of these options is we're foraying into this year's enrollment for the first time. So, everything we've done to date has been based on the '24, '25 enrollment, but now that we have gotten past the Third Friday and we have our October numbers, we were basing everything on our October of 2024 numbers, now we can also, in orange, show you our October of 2025 numbers, knowing that none of these plans would be implemented until '26, '27, but at least gives you an idea of what the enrollment looks like as we move forward. So in option E, as you remember, we have the K8 STEM School at Les Paul, and you can see that is one program like we've talked about that is growing, right? So, in '24, '25, we would have 70% of the capacity of Les Paul at 825 used. Based on their enrollment this year, it would be at 74%. So that is a program that has had an uptick. As opposed to when we look at our elementary footprint, right, with the schools that we would have remaining, in option E, we are closing or repurposing or selling Hawthorne, Lowell, and Whittier. We would have went from 90% capacity a year ago to 87% capacity based on this year's elementary enrollment. And in high school, we would have dropped, well, let's go to middle school next, actually. Here we would have two middle schools versus our current three. They would be at Butler and Horning. There would be six, eight middle schools. And you can see we would have went from 101% capacity in '24, '25, and based on the number of students we have in middle school this year, we'd be at 96% capacity. So that's a drop of 5%. And then in our secondary schools, what you'll see is that we dropped just 1% with the reduction of 75 students from 73% to 72%. So, we also have in this model, three dual-language elementary schools, which we have in all of our models. We have Banting, we have Bethesda, and higher, three of our bigger elementary schools that can hose four sections across the board to mono, to dual-language with better geographic balance. So, we also have in all of the options our continual potential sale of buildings, Pleasant Hill, Saratoga, or the Saratoga Complex, which includes the service building and Harvey Philip, and the White Rock Campus, which houses East and WTA. In each of the options, we pick a home for East and WTA. In this option, we would move East and WTA to Lowell to show you what that would look like. So this plan overall has an 18% seat reduction, or 2422,456 seats. That goes down to a 15% reduction when we use Lowell to house East and WTA, and we would have a seat reduction of 1,976. Mr. Clark and Mrs. Thede have also worked together to update our estimated budget savings based on trying to staff these actual plans, and then also include the building operational savings of not operating actual facilities. So the estimated budget savings of this plan would be between 3.2 and 3.7 million dollars. That does not include the potential sale of those properties, right? That would be, those dollars would be one-time outside of that dollar amount. So, that's how we're gonna show you each of the options, and then the second thing we're going to do with each of the options is when you go to the next page, I'm gonna turn it over to both Mr. Clark and Mr. Pat, and we will show you the current elementary and middle school boundaries. We'll show you draft new boundaries for both levels, and then we'll show you estimated walking and transportation numbers based on, Mr. Pat will describe this to you, one-mile and two-mile circles with kids being outside of a two-mile circle qualifying for transportation. So, I'm gonna turn it over, Mr. Clark will start, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pat.
Yeah, at your desk, there's also larger copies of the boundary maps, so you don't have to squint or look at them that closely. So, I'll just go through some of the key principles, and we've talked about these principles over the last several months in terms of how we would go about doing this and what our look at the buildings that would be involved in these conversations would be. But first of all, there was the goal of maintaining geographic balance, and we think these boundaries, and again, these are draft boundaries, we would certainly, there'll be small revisions going forward more than likely, but to give you a good idea of what we're looking at. We also tried to use major roads as our boundary lines. Right now, we have a lot of boundaries that go through truly in the middle of blocks and subdivisions and things like that. We're trying to maintain that neighborhood feel and not divide neighborhoods or neighbors going to different schools. So, we try to do that as much as possible, and I think we really did a nice job with that. Obviously, this process also ties into it, trying to match the anticipated enrollment with the capacity of the building, so more evenly distribute kids where possible. And then one other thing that we talked a lot about, if you look at the maps, there's a lot of areas, especially the one that's on the screen right now, if you look at hires in yellow and the southern part of Hadfield in blue next to it or purple, we have a lot of these peninsulas that kind of just jut out into the district in the lower sections. We also have that with Rose Glen and Summit View way on the west side, and when it comes to busing, we've had a lot of questions on where we think busing will fall, and Ryan will touch on that as well. But by squaring off those areas, you're not running a Rose Glen and a Summit View bus way out to the west side, basically covering the exact same territory. So we're thinking there's some efficiency being built into these newer boundaries that'll save us money or allow us to reallocate routes into new areas where they're needed. So, that's just a little bit of the background of our thought process, and we wanted to provide some sort of visual aid to help people understand what we might be looking at, and I'll turn it over to Ryan to cover the rest of this page.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. So the bottom graphic that you see has those concentric circles around the new boundaries, so you have the school directly in the middle, and then you go one mile out, and then two miles out, just to give you an idea of, shows definitely how close our schools are to each other. When you look at the one mile and two mile, they overlap quite often. So when it comes to busing, anyone outside of two miles automatically qualifies for busing. That is a state of Wisconsin statute as well. And then what you see is the percentage on the right-hand side, where based on who lies outside that two-mile circle, that is who qualifies for busing at the elementary level with these new boundaries. So that is 16%. What it doesn't include is the hazards that exist. So this is an initial outside of two miles. However, we all live in Waukesha, and there are several hazards that exist. So, without routing everything continuously, you take into consideration that this will bump up, as it does every year, approximately 15 to 20% of the amount of students that need to be bused. Age comes into play, especially elementary students don't navigate train tracks very well, and we have train tracks running right through the middle of town, major highways, four-lane highways, and any dangerous intersections. So, currently, this school year at the elementary level, we have 37% of elementary students who are bused to school. So as Mr. Clark said, we anticipate this to be similar to our current busing model, possibly a savings, but definitely similar as we've been talking about transportation.
Then you guys, you can move on to middle school boundaries, Mr. Clark.
So the, again, you have the map, so you just have to flip forward into your packet a little bit. Right now, on the top there, you can see the three middle schools and how they're divided across, three primary middle schools, how they're divided across, and Mr. Schlemann and I worked on, you know, what's the best way about going this, and we found if we follow pretty much the Fox River down through, you know, north to south across the district, we come up with a balance of enrollment that would work for Horning and Butler becoming our primary attendance area middle schools. Again, the geographic balance, it does that, and a pretty simple, there's only two sites, so you're only, there's only really one line you have to draw, so it was a little simpler than the elementary school schools were certainly, but that was our thought process, was to make it as obvious as possible.
So looking at the transportation component once again, obviously, you have fewer schools, and those people live quite a bit outside those circles, so the amount of individuals who bus at Millan High School, especially middle school, because they can't drive, it's greater than elementary. So currently, this school year, we have about 53% of our middle school students being bused. So again, taking a look at that graphic with the new boundaries, you're at about 52%. Once again, as barriers come into play for some of the things that get in the way or require busing, middle school students are a little bit older, they can navigate things a little bit better, and that is part of the process for our routing system to consider. So, again, you're right on par with where we are this year as far as busing goes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pat and Mr. Clark. The last part of each option are considerations, or things that we think we need to put more time into, things that we may need your guidance on, and so we're calling these initial considerations. And so we'll start with Mr. Clark. He'll talk about the budget and building considerations, and then we'll go over to Ms. Genderman and Mr. Pat in regards to the teaching and learning and student services initial considerations.
So the things that I brought forward as more financial and facility-related is, you know, continue short and long-term budget planning. We also will try to incorporate any potential sale of district property that might come along during this process. Again, we don't control the timing of that, and most often, it probably takes a year and a half to two years to close on a property that includes any sort of redevelopment of the area. We would also review and reevaluate our deferred maintenance schedule with whatever that new footprint would look like, and really have to go through it again and identify the needs and reprioritize them. Lastly, we would go through and... Lastly, we would go through and whatever modifications might come from a decision that's made by the board that might need to have enhancements to buildings, we'd have to identify those and prioritize those along with our deferred maintenance, to make sure that we meet the needs of the students as the changes are, are implemented.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Pat.
I'm going to jump in and share some of the teaching and learning and student services initial considerations. So, in this area, we thought it was important to bring forward initial consideration around reevaluating our 4K and early learning offerings at each school. Currently, we have a variety of offerings within our schools and in our community. Not all of our elementary schools offer a full-day 4K, and so, that would be one thing to consider as we move forward, is that a priority for us, and then adjusting our programming around that with half-day morning or afternoon sessions. In addition, I want to keep in mind, beyond 4K, we have other learning opportunities for our early childhood students. These are students who are provided specialized instruction in those really early childhood grades prior to kindergarten. Currently, the number of students that we do see at this level is increasing, so we want to give consideration to that program and services for our students. And then, overall, the second point we want to bring forward is just reevaluating student services staffing structure specifically around deans, behavior support, staff, and determine the financial impact of any of these considerations.
So, I guess I would, I would ask, would you like to pause after each one, ask questions, and then we can move on to the next one? Or would you prefer we go through all three and then do it at the end? It's completely up to you.
I think if there are pertinent questions that would help us kind of with the thought process going forward, we can pause and see what those might be. Otherwise, if there are more general questions or comments, we could save those until the end. Anything specific about the overview of the plan that was presented? Okay.
All right. So, we are going to, we're going to move on here to F in just a moment. I'm going to have Ms. Gennerman look at one little adjustment. There we go. Yep, perfect. All right. Okay, so we're in option F. So, option F, again, we added the 4K to six grade band. And in this one, as you remember, we would, in order to bring the sixth graders down, we would add Lowell back into the elementary footprint. So, we would then still close, repurpose, or sell Hawthorne, or close and repurpose Whittier with the K-8 STEM. In this one, we move East and WTA to the Whittier site. We'll talk about that in just a minute. We'll start again with K-8 STEM at Les Paul. That continues to be the same, seventy a year ago. It'd be up to seventy-four percent capacity based on this year's enrollment. And then, when we look at our elementary capacity, you'll see last year, we would have been at ninety-three percent. Based on the number of students this year, we'd be at ninety percent capacity in the ten elementary schools that it would take to offer 4K through six. We still have the three dual-language sites in Banting, Bethesda, and higher with the geographic balance. And in this plan, the middle schools become seven, eight middle schools, just grades seventh and eighth. And you'll see in twenty-four, twenty-five capacity, we were at seventy-one percent. Based on what our seventh and eighth grade looks like this year, we would be at sixty-four percent in those particular buildings. And then, at the high school level, same as what we showed in option E, we moved from seventy-three percent to seventy-two percent. So, we again have the potential sale of the same buildings that we consistently talk about, and overall, this plan has a fifteen percent reduction, or one thousand nine hundred and seventy-six seats. With East moving to Whittier, that reduction moves down to one thousand five hundred and fifty-three seats for an eleven percent reduction. And the estimated budget savings for this plan are two point four to two point nine million dollars. So, with that being said, we can move on to, again, the elementary boundaries and elementary busing with Mr. Clark and Mr. Pat.
Yeah, the, the principles are all, all the same, but obviously, you're, you're adding a grade to the elementary level, so to enable us to balance out the attendance within the boundaries and what the building capacity is. The maps are different from E to F. There's a little less efficiency in that, but this is our, you know, early go-around with what these boundaries could look like. But, again, the principles are mainly the same geographic balance and, and major roads, and trying to realize as much efficiency as we can. But this one, you're adding, you know, the, this, so it was, you're adding that the population is different with this elementary snapshot. So, otherwise, and also, I think I forgot to mention at the last one, the three dual-language attendance areas or, or service areas would be identified once all the bound, the final boundaries are mapped out.
Transportation-wise, as Mr. Clark said, you're adding a multitude of students in an entire grade level, so you're, you're increasing that transportation percentage minus the hazards that could come into play. Again, that can be anywhere from a ten to fifteen to twenty percent increase in busing. It just depends on where everyone lies and what that looks like, and what the hazards would be. Once again, currently, our elementary students, we bus thirty-seven percent of them in comparison to the twenty-four, not including the hazardous things we'd have to take into consideration.
All right, and then we'll move on to middle schools.
Yeah, the, the middle school boundaries are unchanged between the two. Obviously, there's fewer kids attending middle schools. The capacity each of these buildings certainly handles the two-grade option.
And transportation-wise, you're basically the same, based on the, the breadth of all of, the distance of transportation for those two boundaries.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to the option F considerations, beginning with Mr. Clark.
Yeah, again, a lot of it would go into the budget planning, and our assumptions are the same in terms of how we would handle potential real estate transactions and those types of things. And then, reviewing the capital needs that would either be looking at prioritizing deferred maintenance, but also many optimizing changes we might need in some of our facilities, which I don't think in this transaction would be, or this situation would be significant. You're not adding specialties and things like that. These buildings once had sixth graders within them. But this one, I think it's a little more important, not that we don't do this with all of our sites every year, but because you're adding that traffic flow and more kids at these elementary sites, we would have to, I think, spend a little more time reviewing the drop-off and pickup routes and, and parking for parents and staff, and then just the overall traffic pattern of each site, because, again, you're adding more, potentially more buses or more cars to each site.
Go ahead, Ms. Gennerman.
In the area of teaching and learning and student services, bullets three and four are repeats from the previous option. But with option F, what we wanted to bring forward was a few other initial considerations, and the first being to articulate a vision for the sixth-grade student experience at the elementary schools, including factors around extracurricular offerings, elective offerings, and even advanced classes in music, classes beyond music, including band and orchestra. The second point we wanted to bring forward is that with option F, we need to consider the curriculum review timeline and what curriculum resources our sixth-grade students would be working with. Right now, in the preliminary stages, our teaching and learning team feels strongly about our student results in the area of math and literacy with our most recent curriculum resources being purchased. What we would do is continue those resources, if approved from the board, and what, right now, what we're doing is estimating that out as far as a financial piece. This would allow our sixth-grade students at the elementary level to continue with the K-five kindergarten through fifth-grade curriculum, rather than going to the sixth-grade curriculum that they have now, since they would be at the same school. Something to consider. The other points are the 4K and early childhood offerings, and again, reevaluating our student service structure for staffing specifically around deans and behavior support, and considering the financial impact of those.
All right, so questions you might have about F?
Mrs. White?
On the page where you talk about the closures, it looks like Lowell's staying open, and it listed under building changes repurposing that you're closing and repurposing or selling Lowell.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's an error in your packet. It's, it's reflected on the screen differently.
Okay.
Yes, we apologize for that. So Lowell would, we would need Lowell in the 4K six model.
I just have one clarifying question. It's for Mrs. Gennerman on the teaching and learning considerations. I see that you mentioned the, the math I-ready, and I appreciate you looking into that. So, it's nice that we have that continuum with what we're currently doing with math. The one thing I'm curious if you've had some thought or discussion about is, we, we, as a district, did a lot around the accelerated six, seven pathway, so I would assume also then there would be some considerations for middle school math as well.
Yes, that's, I did, we did have some preliminary conversations, but more of a conversation to have in developing, looking at all the options. We have it listed as advanced math classes and also music offerings, just around that student experience at the sixth-grade level in an elementary school. But we definitely would have to go back to our scope and sequence, look at all of our options, and even considering options within the I-ready math curriculum if that were the step we were to take.
If I recall, from a very recent teaching and learning conversation, we had well over a hundred students that were in that accelerated pathway.
Yes.
And that's across three schools. So, if we were to kind of redistribute that back over nine or ten, that, I guess, limits our ability to do that acceleration.
So, correct. The last few years at the middle school level, our students have went six, seven, and then seven, eight to get into integrated one for math, and that has been about a hundred students over three middle schools. We've done some creative strategies around staffing and, because there are minimal students at each school. So, it might be three to seven at one school, another three to seven at a school. So, not, at, one school doesn't have enough for a whole class and a whole teacher. So, we've been very creative on our strategies around that. With sixth grade down, moving sixth grade down to the elementary level, we'd have to look at how and what we use for advanced math opportunities for students. Previously, or right now, what we do is, once they get to sixth grade, they have an opportunity to go into math six, seven, and then seven, eight, and get on that compacted accelerated path. And so, with this opportunity, right now, we have about a hundred kids at the fifth-grade level that would possibly be considered for that accelerated path, and they would be among all elementary schools, so about ten schools, that we would need to find creative staffing solutions for. Currently, right now, we have anywhere from two to thirty students per building, so it does really range. Again, they don't come in those great packages of perfect class size, but that would be something we'd have to just develop our next steps and look at all of our options moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, and we'll move on to option G, and option G, 4K six through seven, twelve school structures. In, in this one, we look the same as in option F in terms of the, the K-six or 4K six schools. And so, again, two years, last year, we would have been at ninety-three percent capacity. Based on this year's enrollment, we'd be at ninety percent capacity at the case, 4K six level. And then, at the seven, twelve high school level, using north, south, and west, a year ago, we would have been at a hundred and three percent capacity. Based on this year's enrollment, we'd be at ninety-nine percent capacity. The STEM capacity at Les Paul remains the same, where it ticks up four percent. And we would ultimately, in this model, we would close, sell, or repurpose both Butler and Horning, as well as Hawthorne. We've also talked about Whittier could be a potential South overflow site. We don't know that we would need that, but it could be potentially if we, if we needed it. So, in this model, we, we would, we put Hawthorne as the site for East and WTA to give it another different look as a possibility. And the same buildings for potential sale. Mr. Clark and Mrs. Thiede worked on this overall budget and estimate somewhere between four million and four point six million dollars in estimated budget savings. So now, we'll go to the posed boundaries, draft boundaries, and the walking and transportation with Mr. Clark and Mr. Pat.
Again, the overall principles we used in developing the K-8 boundaries are the same here. So, really, what this was, was a, an exercise in trying to balance out the high school enrollment to fit those additional grades. So, really, what ended up being is, it's two minor changes, and again, this is a draft boundary, but right along 164, as you come into town, this, anything east of, or I'm sorry, west of, that road all the way up to downtown would become west, and then we'd have to move some kids from north to west as well, and that is south of Madison, I believe the street was. So, a very minor change, it might be hard to even see in looking at the maps, especially the smaller ones. But again, we tried to have the high school boundaries be as stable as possible for any change that might be forthcoming.
And it, it probably makes sense to you that with west having the largest capacity, it, we need to adjust the boundaries so that more kids are directed toward, toward west as there isn't as much room at, at south and north. Go ahead, Mr. Pat.
Transportation-wise, you can see the twenty-seven percent busing based on those circles once again. Currently, a combination between our sixth through twelfth graders is about thirty-seven percent of our students in middle and high school are bused in combination, so fifty-three percent of middle school students currently, and then twenty-eight percent of high school students currently are bused. When you look at that twenty-seven percent, you're obviously dropping sixth graders back, which I talked about in the other option, but you're still below that thirty-seven percent. And of course, you have hazards to consider and some of the distance, so we figure we'll be, once again, very similar, possibly some savings on this option for busing as well.
All right, Mr. Pat's going to also take the next slide, where we're going to talk about traffic patterns at each of those schools.
So, the traffic pattern conversation in regards to concerns with, we talked about, talked about it at elementary as well, that exists when you're adding how many more students to each of our, each of our buildings. So, in talking with our high school principals and really looking at the layouts of our buildings, there's many creative things that we can do. I would say that the biggest thing right now is we have secure entrances where we, we really only allow one entrance open and supervised. We definitely would look to open other doors to alleviate some of that traffic and have those doors be secured by multiple staff members, and that allows us a little bit of flexibility. So, taking a look at North High School, we, thinking about our seventh and eighth graders potentially having a, a specific hallway in the building, we currently in all of our buildings assign grade levels to hallways, and so, we can be very purposeful to have specific doors that are open for north. When you come in, it would be by that seven-hundred hallway, there's two doors prior to the main entrance where you can go around and do a drop-off. Our elementaries get creative, we can, at each of our high schools as well, to make sure those patterns are very clear and have drop-off be smooth for the increased number of students. You can potentially also look at the opposite, the opposite side of north. Currently, on to Michigan Avenue, there are some barriers that exist, but that potentially could be a drive-through from, from the backside. I can't remember the name of the road specifically. It's a, but you could come in around Sherrill Lane. If you came in through Sherrill Lane, you could potentially go along the side of west and drop-off on the other side. So, again, options that exist. They're moving on to our next high school, getting back to the presentation, to South High School. Right now, South, obviously, with our referendum funds, the drop-off for South is different than it used to be. You could absolutely look at making a loop potentially through could absolutely look at making a loop potentially through the staff parking lot, coming back around and having a drop-off at the old main entrance or even prior to that, which they refer to as the Kmart wing affectionately, where those doors could be open for potentially seventh and eighth graders who would have lockers there as some of the conversations we had. And then you still have the main drop-off up front for other individuals as it currently exists. And then looking at West High School, looking at, the buses in West High School used to come off of Salusville and then go turn left and come around the front loop. And they were put into the back to be able to access multiple doors in the lower back portion of west. That easily can be flipped, or they can even be worked together where you could have buses pull up a little further, have traffic come very slowly around the buses with some monitoring in the back, or specifically keep the buses on the top loop, close that to all traffic and have all traffic go around the back of west, which is much longer with four entrances. Or you could open two of those. But again, many options when it comes to drop-off and pickup at these sites with the increased student capacity.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pat. We're going to go on to the initial considerations for option G. Mr. Pat will start us out with some of the common building use topics and some of the things that we've learned from our visits to New Berlin and talking with them. And then we'll get into Mr. Clark with budget and building considerations and back to Ms. Gennerman with the TNL and student services ones.
In this option, in option G, we would absolutely have to modify the current block schedule at these buildings to have three lunches. Our lunchroom capacities are at their limits. Even if you have dismissals for other upper grade levels, we would still have to adjust to have three lunches at the high school, at the middle high school level, or in option G. So that is something that we would have to do. Locker rooms, there is, our locker rooms would be mixed among all students. So whatever schedules would exist for whatever grade levels that have gym class during that time, our locker rooms would have to be mixed. We do not have space in any of our buildings to have separate locker rooms for our students. Bathroom-wise, I mentioned before, that we would, we take grade levels and put them in hallways currently. And generally, our students use the bathrooms that are in their hallways when they go to their lockers. However, wherever the classes are in the building, they go to the bathrooms that are closest to the classroom. And in this model, there is not separate bathrooms for seventh and eighth graders or anyone else. Everyone shares bathrooms in the building according to where their class is. And then there was some talk or conversation around if you have seventh and eighth graders in a separate hallway, could you take core classes and then put classrooms there with those seventh and eighth grade students to keep them a little bit more contained in that hallway? It is something you could do, but it would be a fairly major disruption because you would have specific classrooms where you would have teachers continuously travel to throughout the course of the day to meet the needs of the seventh and eighth graders versus those individuals traveling to the teachers' classrooms and all the resources they have in each of those individual classrooms. So those were some of the general things that were discussed.
All right, Mr. Clark, do you want to take the budget and building area?
Yeah, the considerations are the same that have been mentioned under the other options. The only thing I'd add to this option is with the high, sorry?
The overall assumptions are the same, but the only thing I'd want to add to the high school conversation or the 712 conversation is the potential scope of some work and improvements to the buildings that we'll have to identify once the buildings are mapped out by the schedulers at the sites, is you might get into some science labs or face kitchens and specialty classes because of the diverse offerings at the high school. But otherwise, the processes would be the same under all three scenarios.
Some of the pieces that are also in the building and budget ones, starting with number four, are what Mr. Pat was just referring to. Determine if we can have a dedicated space for core classes such as math and language arts for seventh and eighth grade. Looking at the number and location of bathrooms to decide if additional bathrooms may be necessary. Looking at both middle and high school library materials, because we would obviously have one library for 712. And what would that look like? And how would we maximize that space or separate that space based on maturity level? Thinking about the number of FIAID classes that we can do at one time based on the current number of stations within the gym and being cognizant of that. Mr. Pat mentioned the locker rooms already. So like in New Berlin, they have grade level areas within, they're not in there necessarily at the same time, but they have like a seventh grade area versus a different area. Or if they are in there at the same time, which happens sometimes too, they're segregated by area of the locker room. So we have to think about that. The time for labs, right? So to Mr. Pat's earlier area, sometimes if you have them in a core area, there are science rooms in there that are needed for other grade levels. So figuring out, do they always have to be in a lab area if they're in middle school, or can they use a separate class area and then use the lab as they need it? And then we also would need to spend time in the athletic and activities planning stage so that we're cognizant of making sure that we have room for in the auditorium and the indoor spaces, any outdoor spaces for the middle school athletics, which are, at this time, cross-country wrestling and track, not nearly as significant as the high school sports. And then, of course, like the band, orchestra, choir, as well as any performing arts would have to be considered too. And we learned quite a bit from New Berlin on those types of topics. Go ahead, Ms. Gennerman.
In the area of teaching and learning and student services, many of the previous considerations would be applied to option G. But with this one, there are two additional ones to point out. Really circling back around our curriculum review timeline, we would need to consider any adjustments with that if we proceed with the K6 and 712. Certainly something we can do, but just want to be mindful of the financial commitment with adjustments. With this model, we would want to spend a little bit more time around our course catalog and consider other revisions, especially the seventh and eighth grade elective pathways. Within the middle school model, we had already started that work last year. So we had already started some of that work, but we'd want to circle back around that and determine what those elective pathways look like and consider the spaces, like others said, around the number of kitchen areas and the amount of time the kitchen areas is used currently with 9 through 12 students. With this option, we'd also want to spend significant time looking at our current 9 through 12 grade level classes and determine what would, what classes would be available for middle school students, and then how these would factor into the students' overall credits as well as their GPA.
All right, so that brings us to the close of what we've put together. So we certainly can try to answer any questions on any of the plans or more global questions that you may have.
All right, so we'll open it up for questions. And I just, as folks are kind of thinking about what they'd like to start with, I do want to thank all of you for the immense time and effort that you put into all of this, the boundaries, the considerations and limitations, and obviously, a lot of time researching what some of these options might look like. Thank you for that. Anyone like to start? Mrs. Kozlowski?
I will start. I just, I guess for a recap from where we were a month ago, if I'm looking at option E, at some point in time, we would have to come back and close a high school and probably more middle, or more elementary schools, based on looking at the capacities that are here. I mean, that's really what we're looking at and saying. In option F, we're not addressing middle school or high school capacities at all. So I'm struggling to try to bridge through there. And then option G, based on the considerations that would have to be done, what do we think from a timeline on where we sit today with what we have in front of us versus coming to a recommendation, having more of responses to the initial considerations for each of the plans? What is, and where are you with the team?
I think what I would say is the 712 middle school, high school structure would take, as you can see, a lot more, in our opinion, planning than the other options. So from that standpoint, if that was the option that the board chose, at this time, we would recommend that we would not implement that until the '27, '28 school year, to give us more time to make sure that we would be able to work through all of the pieces that we talked about and maybe some of the pieces that we haven't uncovered yet.
Okay. And then I just have one general observation at this point in time. I really thank you guys for all of the detail that's in here and especially looking at the maps. But what I thought was really interesting is the map of the elementary boundaries with the new boundaries, where you draw the one mile and two mile. And with, in almost certainty, you can have three elementary schools that are all within one to two miles of each other. And I think that was really eye-opening as we start to talk about neighborhood schools and where we're at. When I start to look at this, I'm saying almost all of our schools are a neighborhood school within relativity of one to two miles of each other. I mean, Bethesda to Rose Glen is less than two miles. Bethesda to Summit View is less than two miles. Summit View to Meadowbrook is less than two miles. And then you kind of get on to the opposite side of it, and you get Hillcrest, Banting, Hadfield, and higher, all within two miles of each other. And I just thought that was an interesting data point to call out and look at, because when I first saw that, I just, it kind of changed the spectrum for me.
It was eye-opening to us as well. And I meant to say this earlier when I was talking about the 10-year outlook of the cost of the status quo, right, and what the Elm Brook School District looks like and what we look like. I'm not sure that any plan that we pick gets us to that point, right, for 10 years out, if we're at, under a little under 8,000 students, right? I think we probably have to come back regardless at some point, if the birth rate continues the way it's going. Even if we take a significant swing like a G, I'm not sure that we still, within that window, I think we will still have too many elementary schools.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, just a quick clarification. So the, what we just went over, I presume this is going to be on the website with all the other optimizing the future documentation?
Yes.
English and Spanish, both?
Yes, Natalia's working on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah, this is just a real quick, probably just a typo that needs to be corrected. If I look at option G, the title is K6, 712. Everything else for the elementaries has been listed as 4K.
Should be 4K.
So that 4K is still included on that one, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's one of those things where we've been working and working and working and looking and looking and looking at it, and then we look at it so long and we miss certain things. So thank you for pointing it out.
We do have that change in the presentation. Just didn't hit the printed ones, but thank you for that.
Mrs. Koenig?
Thank you. In exploring G a little further and just seeing all the moving parts that are going to be involved in this one, first of all, I would agree, boy, this would have to take another year of planning. When it comes to the high school and the new block schedule that they implemented, I know that, that, you know, with four class periods and a day for the high school alone, and I'm thinking about all the different, you know, like tech ed, consumer ed, and then incorporating the middle school, you know, into those as well, like for, you know, those exploratory classes and things. I guess I'm just wondering, could there be a programming conflict with so many things trying to happen in the high school spaces? I guess I'm, this was eye-opening to me, just looking at all the moving parts that would be required with the different schedules, you know, with the block schedule in high school and things like that. I guess it gave me a little bit more of a pause. And I appreciate that this may be something that will take a little bit more orchestration because there's a lot going on, I guess, seeing it here and really thinking about it, and some things that were brought to my attention from people that I was talking with, you know, last week or so.
Yeah, sure. I'll try my best, Mrs. Koenig. I think, first of all, we think we have to have the same schedule. And we would think of it as a 712. It's one building, right? It's not two distinct buildings. It's not like a 7-8 building and a 912 building. It's one school with one leadership team and support mechanisms. And so running the same schedule then allows for the benefit of the kids in the seventh and eighth grade to take the upper-level courses, right, because they're on the same schedule. And in a block schedule, you can create what they term as skinnies, right? So if it's a 90-minute block, you can have two 45s within that. So that would be a consideration that you could think about for middle school. But certainly, there are some, there are some challenges. So for example, when we went to New Berlin, I mean, they're like us, we have one kitchen, right? So the middle school kids don't have family consumer ed because the high school kitchens are used every period of the day. So we are in the process of revising the middle school electives. We think that's necessary anyways. And so I think we would have to, we would have to work with what's available in the high school. They also have options, though, to, and access to the resources that the high school has, right? So there's some benefit to that. But we'd also be leaving behind the kitchens they have, like in the middle schools, and some of the things, the tech, the shops they have in the middle schools and things like that. So there's, takes, you know, pluses and minuses, trade-offs and takeaways, things that we just need to work through. Yeah, I don't know if that helps, but it's, you know, like one school, we're all on the same schedule as our thought. What we learned is that there's not nearly as much separation. And the board members that came, I think we saw it, right? There's not nearly as much separation as when one might think. And it works. And they've been doing it since 1986, and it's ingrained. And so could we do it? I think we could do it, right? It would be, just be a shift for us, and it would take some advanced planning.
Mr. Harland?
Yes. So I know that in previous months, I think we had discussed, when we got to this point, there would be potential additional community input sessions. I know that there's not going to be the same listening sessions. Is there, is there any plan for potential community input sessions or town hall sessions at all?
We've talked about that a little bit, and probably more from the way we're thinking about it is probably more around information sharing, right, similar to what we're doing here tonight. And then trying to gather some insights from people, more auditorium-type sessions, because we don't think we can, to your point, recreate the summer, right, during the school year. But we have thought about that in terms of using the time between now and the November board meeting. And if that was of interest to the board, that we would be able to do that and pull that off. Yeah.
Anyone else? Mr. Zenobia?
Thank you. So just kind of building off of what Mrs. Kozlowski said, you know, in looking at the plans and now having a lot more detail, it seems that maybe, as a standalone plan, that each of these options may not get us to where we ultimately need to go. And I'm wondering if there's not some possibility of synthesizing some of these plans together to come up with something that takes pieces of all of them to get us to where we need to go. I think at the end of the day, our elementary footprint may remain too large. You know, we're going to have a deficit in the middle schools for some period of time if we keep those open. And then, to me, it looks like the 7 to 12 model, on our part, really needs more planning than what we anticipated. So I don't know if that's, you know, a phase-in approach of doing some of the things that must be done sooner, closing elementary schools, what have you, redistricting, and then looking toward how do we really keep our high schools open, if that's the goal, long-term? Because I think that... Because I think that is a conversation that ultimately we'll have, and I'm not sure that a future board wants to have to really consider that, which is kind of why I like the 7 to 12 idea. Part of my takeaway from going to visit the New Berlin School was, it really does give some opportunities to those would-be middle schoolers in a high school environment. There's just more opportunity for them to grow and to decide which path, you know, their lives may take. So, I think that's a very strong opportunity. I think that's captured a little bit within our STEM program already and a lot of the programs that we already have in place. And I think any way that we can begin to think about how, you know, we augment those programs or magnify those programs or get more students to think about, you know, how they really are going to grow through high school is important, not only for Waukesha but for education in general. So, that's a long way of saying, I think there are pieces of all three options on the table that are intriguing and probably need to be done and maybe need to be the next option. But I don't necessarily know what that looks like, just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Mr. Wad.
Thank you. So, without going into any specific opinions about which I think is a better or worse solution, as I look at this, I can't help but think, number one, F is not really an option. F is either a stepping stone to E or it's nothing. Because when I look at F, right, we're talking that our middle school, our middle school capacity would be 64% this year, which means it'll probably be closer to 60% or 61% based on the trends we're seeing just by next year. Our high schools, I assume we're seeing a little bit slower rate of decline here because those class sizes that are coming through are still a little bit bigger than the ones that are entering or have entered in recent years. If we're going to adopt F, then without seeing it as a stepping stone, then F becomes a plan that says, not only are we going to be talking about a high school, we have to close, but a middle school within five years, both. So, I just want to put it on the table that, from my perspective, F isn't an option. F is merely a temporary holding spot for going to E if that's the way we're going to go. So, if we go back, or to G, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm looking at these in the wrong order. So, it seems to me that what we're left with here is E and G. And it seems to me if we really boil it down, what we're saying is, we either want to move forward in an effort to try to stabilize our footprint and maintain our high school buildings without having to try to figure out how to close one of them in the next five years, or we are committing, if we adopt E, to the fact that some board is going to be back here in four or five years, and that's what we're saying. And we're basically saying we're going to kick the can down the road to them. And maybe that's what we ultimately need to do. I don't know. I think it's a discussion we need to have. But from my perspective, we're down to E and G. And F is merely a pathway to G should we choose to adopt it.
If anybody else wants to comment or respond, I would typically hold my comments to the end, but I do want to respond to that because I think, I'm thinking along the same lines, but I can't help myself but starting with the fact that a few of us did identify F as maybe being that intermediate. Although, I understand the appeal, the community appeal to F because it keeps more elementary schools open, right? It's less disruptive. It also doesn't hit our targets. I think we have to be sensitive to G because it goes further than what we had initially discussed wanting to do. But I think it's worth talking about the merits of G because from an academic perspective, just from an operational and academic perspective, I think there's a lot of benefit, and I'll come back around to that. But I also think that F is not immediately, I don't necessarily agree that F is immediately off the table, but I think there might be some sort of an EF combination that we could be talking about. And I'd be happy to share those thoughts, too, but I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to ask or say. Mrs. Voight.
There's a lot here to try to take in. And without the benefit of the summer feedback that we really took advantage of, I think, like letting the community have a chance to respond, this is so much now that's come on the table in September for the community to take in and try to deal with it all. I think what we're trying to do is a long-range plan, you know? And I don't know that we can make that decision like now in the time, at this point, for this school year, then maybe the determination of a long-range plan might be better, kick the can down the road, you may say, but wait a year and have a chance to really focus on the things that can make up the long-range plan. You know, we've had a chance to get a lot of feedback from the community, and their concern that F does address is the value of community schools, the value of the local neighborhood schools. And yes, they are close, you know, we can see that here, but that means that they can walk to school, that means they can participate more readily, it doesn't involve busing, et cetera. And I think we've heard over and over again from first Bethesda, now Hawthorne, Lowell, you know, Prairie, that the value of those neighborhood schools is what is a really, really valued part of what the school of Waukesha has to offer. You know, none of the schools is saying that we should get rid of any of the programs because they're all, serve our students well in that context. And I think that, you know, if we want to honor what the community has been saying, you know, we really have to keep F on the table as, you know, an option to be able to, you know, get them to bigger capacity if we roll the 6th graders back into that program and be able to keep that very much treasured element of neighborhood schools.
Anyone else? Mr. Zenobia.
Yeah, just maybe a thought to that. I think when we started this process, it was obvious that we needed to do something. I think now that we have so much data in front of us and so many options that we've considered, it's maybe even a little bit overwhelming to say, can we all do it in the next school year? So, what I'm saying is I think it would be a big mistake on our part to not begin to make change as we have been planning to do. Whatever that change is for next year, I think absolutely needs to happen. I think there are some consistencies in all these plans that I think everybody would agree on, we could do pretty easily. But if we don't begin to make some of these hard decisions as we've planned to do, I think we disservice ourselves and the community to what ultimately will happen. Now, through the process, I'm not sure that we can implement everything that the board may decide at some point on the next year either. So, is it a phased-in approach? Is it, you know, pieces of each plan? Maybe. But I think, I think we're at a great time to make, to start to make choices that are going to really affect the district positively. And I think it will be positive because I do believe that with a lot of work that's been done in the area of curriculum and other things, that we have a chance to really enhance, you know, every child's experience in the district. And this ultimately will only further that. It's, it will become a drain on the district to continue to spend money, you know, as it's been said here, on buildings as opposed to our students. And so, we have an opportunity. I really feel that change has to come. It has to come in some measure in the coming year. And I guess I'll leave it at that. I just think we would be making a mistake to not begin that process as we said we should. So.
Mrs. Koenig.
I also ought to mention, too, that I think some of the concerns of the community are just the fact of the rate of speed that things are happening, you know, without, I think everyone understands the change is necessary and that we, I agree, we should start slowly phasing in these changes. I almost feel like F is kind of a natural progression to a long-term possible G, which I think ultimately is going to be the way we want to go. It just feels more measured and a little bit more of a phase-in to begin with F because it is giving the change that we do need, you know, at the elementary, closing a few buildings, you know, that is difficult. However, we are moving the 6th grade back in preparation that, you know, probably within the next few years, three to five years, we may have to ultimately go to option G. It puts us in a better position to do that, though, because we already have moved 6th grade back, where if we were to begin or just implement E, well, then, again, we're doing a drastic change to move 6th grade back and move 7th grade up. It just seems like a lot of moving parts at once, and I think F is a more natural progression. And I know it may feel like you're kicking the task down the road to a future board, but decisions this big, I don't think that's a bad thing in three to five years. If we have made significant changes, the population is going to continue dropping. It's going, the writing is going to be on the wall, and you may have more people more willing to be able to accept a change like a 7 to 12 at that point because we would have done it more slowly, more measuredly. And again, the writing is going to be on the wall if the population continues to drop. We're going to be faced with that. I think we're going to have a lot more understanding that that is the way we're going to go versus immediately making drastic changes that upheaves the entire district. So, I feel like F actually is a pretty good transition segue to G. Maybe you go this way for a few years, and then you have time to plan the 7 through 12 because it is going to take an enormous amount of time and planning to make that work. And I agree, it's not going to be ready by next year, not questioning even the year after that, because we want to do it right. So, I actually prefer F going right into G, almost a phased-in approach.
Mr. Wad.
Yeah, well, thank you for those comments, Mrs. Koenig. I should clarify. When I say that F is merely a stepping stone to G, you and I are, I think, thinking the same thing. I'm saying that F as a standalone doesn't make any sense, right? But I agree, and I mean, it seems obvious to me that if we were to go to G, we would need to do it in steps and phases, right? So, I just don't know how, and I believe Ms. Piasik had indicated that she had some thoughts on how E and F might fit together. I'd be curious to hear those because I'm struggling to see how F and E can fit together. So, maybe that's a good segue for our president.
Okay. I will. I just want to make sure everybody had a chance to share their thoughts. And as I'm listening to you, I mean, again, just to, I think we're, you know, just continue to demonstrate that we come into this process with the end in mind, right? This is a working process, and as the more information that we get, I think the more comfortable we get with some of these ideas. So, I think what you both were saying was, you weren't necessarily seeing F, you're seeing F as more of a transition to something else. I don't necessarily see F as a viable starting point. I think it might be a viable stepping stone, but I don't think it's a viable starting point. And the reason is because it doesn't take very long. If we, let's say we moved into next school year and just did the 4K through 6, like we have it scoped out in F, it doesn't take very long before those elementary schools are once again below the capacity that we're at right now. That happens pretty quickly. So, my, when I listen to what the administration is saying about what is difficult to implement these plans, my initial thought is that E gets us the budget capacity that we're looking for. It allows us to continue with all the curriculum that we have. And I think everyone in this room, this is how we got to F and G last conversation, was many of us didn't agree with the decision to move 6th grade to middle school, and so we liked the idea of having the 6th graders back in elementary school. But I think if we could start with E, which would allow us to reduce the footprint of the elementary schools and go a year with E, and then do a small variation on F, but it's essentially keep the 5th graders, hold them, right? Because we're going to change the boundaries. So, when I, I've done a lot of modeling on the transitions that the students are experiencing, right? So, you don't want to change the boundaries and then change the grade levels and, you know, have all these things that are happening simultaneously. So, what I would see is that you could go to E, change the boundaries, change the bussing strategies, get all of the operations of E in place. And then, after next school year, keep the 5th graders where they are so it becomes a 4K 6 because by then, we will have the greater capacity in the smaller footprint of elementary schools. Now, I understand, and I think this was your point, Mr. Wad, was that now we have middle schools, 7, 8. Now, we don't have to actually move the Saratoga STEM next year either, so we could, we could set that aside, or if we have opportunities for that property, we could do that. So, we could do that as part of E, we could do that as part of F. They're both there, right? So, when we get to that point where we now are 4K 6, that would be two years from now, then we have, we have the middle school enrollment problem, right? So, and the high schools are kind of slowly coming down, but we also know that the birth rates are going down, too. And so, we're seeing that affect a little greater capacity at the elementary level, right? So, after that, we would then be facing now the 7, 8 middles. But I'll be honest, I'm not super worried about 64% capacity in a middle school for a few years. And I'd be more worried about 97% or 99%. And I think the challenge with our middle schools right now is there's, I mean, if you had a middle schooler, Dr. Seaver's been a middle school principal, like, it's a tough time, it's a dynamic time, right? And academically, we want to be able to support those kids. So, if we had to do 7, 8 middle schools for a little while at a lower capacity, maybe that comes at a little bit additional cost, but we've saved that cost by starting with E instead of starting with F. Because F gets us about $800,000 more from an operating perspective than E because of that additional elementary school, which I understand is a difficult conversation to have for everybody, but I'm just, you know, logistically trying to lay that out. So, if we could work through that, having a little lower capacity in the middle schools for a few years isn't the worst thing. And that would also give us the time to contemplate, do we do 712? Do we have to look at closing a high school? And I know that's not any happy conversation anybody wants to have either. Maybe what Mr. Zenobia said, I see a majority of positive upside with the 712 model. I think the experiences, the academic offering, the resources, the operations, 8th graders have opportunities to get ahead on high school classes, that creates capacity in their high school schedules, start times, transportation, families with multiple students, like there are so many benefits to the 712. But we are not New Berlin, and it would be three of them. So, it's just different. And I think, you know, that the time that it's going to take to do that, I'd be open to the idea of maybe doing one, one year, and then doing two the next year. You know, I think there's a lot that, now that we know what it's going to take, we could take the time to do that. So, I've not really been a fan of any kind of stepwise process. But now that we're kind of studying E and F and understanding what it is, I could see a very logical progression from E to F with a year or two of some lower capacity at the middle schools while we figure out how we want to handle the 712. And that gives us some flexibility. Or we could say right now, we just want to take the time and do the 712, but that gives us a little bit more time. So, that's kind of where my head's at.
Yeah, so just a quick follow-up on that. And I follow your logic, and it makes sense. The one thing I would wonder, though, so, let's say we did it that way, we started with E. I think our capacity would be at, what, 90? What would our capacity be in the elementary?
87%.
Okay. So, if we wanted to hold those 5th graders, would we have the space to do that? Or when would we have the space to do that?
That's a good question. It might take It might take two, and that would be a question I would want you guys to answer.
Yeah, just looking at this year's enrollment drop at the elementary school, but I would say, on average, district-wide, you're probably dropping about 150 kids per year is a kind of a round number. At the high school level this year, we dropped, you know, the resident count dropped by 2.1%. But that's the resident count, a different count, but at the high school levels, nine, 12, the drop was actually 2.3%. So, it's a steady, one thing about our enrollment drop, it's kind of a steady flow, right? It's a steady percentage, so it's easier to plan around, but I would plan on elementary, definitely about 150 kids. So, in two years, we have a lot of 300-capacity elementary schools, right? In two years, that's why, I think Dr. Seaver's right, there's no ten-year solution to this, as much as we might try to get there.
I would add that, in addition to the sixth grade consideration, we have to look at the other end of the 4K offerings and early childhood pieces, too. So, not just remembering that the other end. Right now, we have some schools that have multiple sessions, like a full day and a morning and an afternoon, so that uses two classes. So, with the move of sixth grade back, we have to also consider the 4K and early childhood components, too, as far as space. All things that we can do some estimates, though, on.
One last little follow-up on what I was just commenting on, and if I've learned anything from Ms. Gunnerman, it's that these classes don't come in nice little neat packages. So, I also wonder if we might have some schools that can easily hold back the fifth graders and some schools that don't, so that, we might even want to look at that from a, on a school-by-school basis. If we think that's an option we want to explore and see when we really are at a space where we could do it with all of the elementary schools at once, right, as opposed to piecemealing it, because I think that would be even worse.
I think it would have to be all at once, but the thing that we have in our control are the boundaries. So, that's the advantage to doing E first, is that we can work with the boundaries to make sure that we create that capacity, because we know we have it district-wide. It's just, it's a building-to-building question.
Nice thing about the elementary level, though, is once they get to first grade, you can kind of, you can track those kids through sixth grade, and those class sizes, they tend to be pretty stable. It's that 4K, that early entry point where you're kind of, kind of guessing, but Kelly's right, I think, keep in mind, we were talking about selling these buildings and all those, we might have several buildings during this transition period she's talking about at our access, because the sales might not be complete. You know, just because we've talked about moving east, doesn't mean I'm going to sell White Rock in three months. You know, east could remain where they are through the 26, 27 school year with no problem whatsoever, so, just a couple of points I thought I'd make.
Mrs. White.
One component of E that if we would rethink, it would open up some other options. If we weren't determined that we needed to put the K8 STEM together, like at Les Paul, leave Whittier Open, and instead have just the Saratoga part of it be repositioned. And one of the things that I, to explore, might be with the capacity that we have at, you know, at, say, Horning at this point, could Saratoga be relocated there to fit into that space and be able to do the sales, you know, the Saratoga complex, per se? If it's not trying to find a place for all of K8, but just the five-through-eight element of it at Saratoga, it's one of the things that, another consideration, that we could start that sooner, you know, if that merge would be possible, to just move them over to Horning.
Mrs. Kozlowski.
Okay, so, one of the things I think we were striving really hard not to do was to try to piecemeal and create more options upon every time we're doing that, which I hear us starting to do. I think, I think what we are agreeing on in focus is that we like the K6, seven-to-12 model, but what we have learned is that the steps to get us to that, we need time. And I think we've heard the community ask us to slow down, I can relate to that, but the other piece to this is it still needs to be structured. This is not a five-year plan, this is a, to Mr. Zenobia's point, we need to be implementing this next school year, we need to be implementing the next school year, and we need to be final no later than the third year, period. This is, and it, the decisions to this, because of what we're learning on how we need to do that, I think are the right ones to pause on the right areas. And I still want to get to the same point that I've kept saying for the longest period of time, we're at a rare opportunity to do the right thing at the right time for the sole benefit of our students and our staff, that's it. What we know that we are excellent at is we have phenomenal staff, we have solid curriculum, and that doesn't matter what building it's in. The movement to that requires some balance and some stepping stones that we're learning, especially when it deals with the ages of what we're doing things and how we need to, based on Dr. Seabert's timeline and with the team, on how do we get to the high schools? But cherry-picking pieces in different parts of the schools, I think we're at the point where I like what I hear about, I think this makes sense, I think Dr. Piasik's point resonates, but it needs to be a clear timeline, and this is not a five-year plan. We are, we're agreeing that what we've learned says we do need to add a little bit of a pause, but we also need to be efficient with it so that everybody understands what's happening when, and then we're prepared for it. I just wanted to pause. I don't, I don't like when we start cherry-picking certain pieces in buildings. Look, we need to close some schools, and we need to be able to move to a model that supports our district at the benefit of our students, and that has always been our number-one focus.
Mr. Wad.
Yeah, I would just suggest that, at this point, we're kind of venturing into what we would be doing if we were to hold a workshop.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering if maybe we, and I, I completely understand Ms. Kozlowski's points, and I agree with what she's saying, I do believe there needs to be structure, and we need to plan. We're not going to be able to do that tonight, right? And I, and I don't think, I think the best way for us as a board to try to get there and provide opportunities for additional things to be considered and thought about is for us to try to get a workshop in before our next board meeting.
I think that's reasonable. Anybody else? Just a, a couple, some, did you have some? Some summary thoughts as we kind of wrap this up, and some data that was shared tonight. So, I think we have a really solid packet of information that can help us guide these decisions. And I think, I mean, the amount of work, not just by the administration, but all of you, our community members, you know, the many, many, many sessions we've had together, we're, we're really moving in the right direction, so I feel like this is very productive. As a reminder, so in 10 years, we will have $30 million less in our operating budget to operate. So, doing nothing or doing a little bit is not going to get us there. So, we have to just continue to keep that in mind, that that's only 10 years from now. I mean, that's a, that's an education cycle for, for any of our students. So, I think it's important that we minimize the disruption due to transitions. And I think while we would like to do things kind of all at once in order to do that, that's not likely going to be the case. So, we should do what we can to move as swiftly as possible, but making sure that, that we do it well, because the best strategy poorly executed is a poor strategy. So, we have to be really cautious, we need to make sure that we can get the work done. I think we have plans in front of us that meet the goals that we set out to accomplish, so I think a workshop would be productive. Any other comments? Anything else for you, Dr. Seabert?
No, nothing other than we really appreciate your, your comments and your feedback, and I think we would agree as a cabinet, a workshop would be a good next step for us to dive deeper into what we've been discussing, and just thank you for being willing to take on this, this important work, because we know it's not easy, and we are being proactive, and I can speak as a superintendent for many, many years that there aren't many boards that are willing to have this conversation and take this on, so, thank you.
And just as a reminder, I appreciate especially the folks that are in the room with us. I know that people are kind of studying the documents that you provided tonight, and those will be made available, but these are drafts, there's nothing here that represents a final recommendation, so we will continue this process. Okay, thank you. Okay, we can move next to the consent agenda, and we'll start with Mr. Clark presenting the gifts.
Yeah, we have three gifts tonight. St. Luke's Church donated a total of $1,260 to be used towards extra educational experiences for Hadfield students. Auburn, Byer, and Jonathan Schultz donated $500 to be used for the 4K reading NOOK. And then Julie and David Dopke gave $1,700 to be used to fund educational experiences for students.
Thank you. Mrs. White.
It is Dopke, Julie and David Dopke. And just want to thank Hadfield's sincere appreciation for these gifts that have been received from St. Luke's Lutheran Church and from the other groups, to be able to, in part, address the flood situation that happened during the summer, along with just regular startup kinds of concerns.
Thank you. Okay, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Included in the items for approval are the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on September 16th, 2025. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Also included in the consent agenda are policies and bylaws, policy 5112, entrance age, which was revised, policy 5464, early graduation, also revised, policy 0100, definitions revised, policy 7530.02, staff and school officials' use of personal communication devices, revised. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. Seeing none, Mr. Zenobia, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Yes, thank you. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved one resignation, one retirement, and two new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, an addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Anything else? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Eric Brooks.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Natalie Gren.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Thomas Harland.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0. Back to Dr. Seabert for the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. We'll begin tonight with the overnight field trip report given by Deputy Superintendent Gunnerman.
Good evening. We have several field trips that were recently approved to share with you tonight. So, first is for North, Boys Cross Country, a state meet in Wisconsin Rapids, that's at the end of this month, October 31st. Another one for North, for the varsity dance team, the state dance competition in lacrosse that will likely be in February. The dance team, if they continue to move forward, they would also go to Nationals in Florida in February as well. For South, we have cheerleading for our national school cheer championship, potentially in January, and then the rest are for West, Boys Cross Country, a state meet in Wisconsin Rapids, one-act play contest in Stevens Point, and then cheerleading national high school cheer champion, like the other schools in Florida, and that would be in January.
All right, thanks, Ms. Gunnerman. In the interest of time, I just wanted to say thank you for your service as we celebrate Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week, and you certainly should know that your efforts and your support with the school district of Waukesha forward, and it's most appreciated. So, that concludes my report, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you. All right, we will move into our committee reports, and we'll start tonight with the Student Services Committee, which will be presented by Mr. Harland.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee meeting was held on October 2nd, 2025. There were two action items and one discussion and information item on the agenda. Our first action item was the approval of revisions to policy 5112, entrance age. This policy is updated to reflect the current state of law, which recognizes the parental right to opt out of immunization and to file a statement regarding the choice in lieu of the immunization records. The appropriate legal citation is also added. These revisions are recommendation, are recommended. The revisions to policy 5112, entrance age, was approved in committee and added to the consent agenda. Second action item was the approval of revisions to policy 5464, early graduation. This policy is updated to provide additional options for the evaluation and approval of early graduation requests. It is also updated to specify that a student who graduates early but is still participating in district programming or activities remains subject to the requirements of the board policy and other rules. The revisions to policy 5464, early graduation, were approved in committee and also added to the consent agenda. Our discussion and information item was the school choice and program application dates. Mr. Pat presented information about the changes in our in-district transfer, also known as school choice, and charter school application dates due to the optimizing our future planning and decision dates. The school, school choice application period will be open from January 5th, 2026, to January 30th, 2026, and this window has been in December for many years. Applications to STEM Elementary, STEM Middle, the Academy of Health Professions, the Engineering Prep Academy will also shift from December to the January time period. Also moving to January are applications for the Montessori School of Waukesha. Registration for folk 4K enrollment will be from January 5th to February 27th, with the lottery date being on March 13th. And application dates for open enrollment are set by the State Department of Public Instruction and are not affected by the optimizing our future for the 26, 27 school year. This application period dates are February 2nd through April 30th. The Student Services Committee will meet again on Tuesday, November 4th, at 6:00 PM, and this completes the Student Services Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Harland. Are there any questions? Mr. Harland? Who wins the award for his committee report taking longer than his committee? Thank you for the updates. Next is the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you. Yes, our committee met earlier this evening. We did have some action items, but those are covered in the consent agenda, and we didn't have any additional ones. We did, however, have a discussion information item around the review of our 26, 27 school calendar. As in years past, we have already obtained a teacher feedback at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for professional staff and the Superintendent's Advisory Council for parents. As it stands now, the first day of school for the 26, 27 school year would be Tuesday, September 1st. Labor Day is on 9/7, and while the term may commence prior to Labor Day, it cannot commence before 9/1 unless there is a waiver granted. And the committee had some discussion on the possibility of exploring a waiver, and so we asked, the committee asked that that be brought back to have some additional questions and data presented on the possibility of getting a waiver to start prior to 9/1. So, we will be doing that in the months ahead. The, again, the term would begin on the 1st of September of next year and end on June 9th of 2027. And that, I don't know if there's any discussion on that, but that would conclude my report.
Did the committee, by any chance, have the opportunity to discuss some of the differences in schedules with neighboring districts?
It was brought up, but we're going to look at that as well, what, what goes on.
Okay. Okay. I think especially with next year's unique timing of things, people may be going about it a little bit differently. But I do know, and this maybe also gets back to some of our operating or optimizing the future work and school start times and things, that the length of the school day, five or 10 minutes in the day, can aggregate into days at the end of the school year, but that also leads to really long days and early start times, so those have to be waived. But it looks like, Mr. Wad, you have something to?
Yeah, I just want to kind of elaborate. We did talk about that. We talked about the possibility of looking at days that are currently built in as days off, and do we really need them? What, you know, how do parents or staff feel about them? Ms. CD has graciously accepted the task of coming back with some of that data for us, what it would look like if we were to add a certain number of minutes, how many days could we end the school year sooner, in addition to the discussion we had around, you know, a waiver to start earlier or possibly remove days. So I think we'll get a lot more information on what that might look like at a future meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, we look to report a lot more on the HR committee in the future, so thank you.
Thank you. So you can tie with Mr. Harland?
I hope so, yes.
The length of your committee report versus your committee. Okay, next up is the Policy and Government Relations Committee, given by Mr. Wad.
Thank you, Mrs. President. The Policy and Government Relations Committee met on Monday, October 6th, 2025. There were two policies from the Policy and Government Relations Committee that were on the consent agenda this evening that were approved. Those were Policies 0100 and 7530.02. Policy 0100 was a change to definitions, which was updated to include smartwatches and wearable technology as personal communication devices. There was also a new definition of school district classifications, which was also added to the definitions policy. A section was added to Policy 7530.02, which deals with staff and school officials' use of personal communication devices, which states, quote, "Employees and school officials are permitted to use a board-owned and/or personally-owned PCD," personal communication device, "to make or receive calls, send or receive emails, send or receive texts, and send or receive instant messages that concern district business of any kind. Employees and school officials are responsible for archiving such communications in accordance with the district's requirements, as outlined in Policy 8310, Public Records." Any questions on any of, either of those changes? Okay. There were two policy discussion information items. Both were technical corrections. The first technical correction was to Policy 0168.1, meeting minutes. A reference to maintaining minutes was updated to reflect current practice. The official minutes shall be maintained in print or in electronic form and shall be accessible in the district office. And the second technical correction were corrections to Policies 3281 and 4281, which both deal with personal property of staff members. Of reference to Policy 7540.02 was corrected to its new policy number of 7530.02, staff and school officials' use of personal communication devices. Lastly, there was one government relations discussion information item. Dr. Seabert gave us an update on recent Wisconsin legislative topics, now that they're in session. He identified some of the ones that may impact education that are currently floating around. One dealt with funding healthy meals, another discussion around equalization aid, potential legislation for a teacher bill of rights, and Act 20 for math. District consolidation and shared services, another one around referendum regulation. Dual enrollment programs was another potential topic that the legislature may take up in this current session. Any questions on any of those? If not, the next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 10th, 2025, here in the Boardroom at Blair, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wad. Next up is the Finance and Facilities Committee report, given by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Dr. Piasak. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, October 6th. There were no action items and three discussion items. The first discussion item was the Employee Health Clinic Report. Laura Anderson and Crystal Ports from Pro Healthcare, along with Kristen Murrows, the district's benefit coordinator, provided an update on the employee health clinic. The second discussion item was the 2025-2026 budget development. The committee was presented with updates on the 2025-2026 budget development, including the third Friday count, equalized property valuation, Fund 39 and tax levy information, personal property aid, and the updated tax levy projection, which will be certified on October 15th. The last discussion item was the monthly budget report. The committee was presented with an update on the status of the school district of Waukesha's budget. The report included Fund 10, the general fund, and Fund 27. The administration also provided an unaudited update on the close of fiscal year 2024-2025. The next FNF meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 10th, at 5:30 p.m. in the Boardroom. Dr. Piasak, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. Our last committee report tonight is Teaching and Learning, and that will be given by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Boardroom. We have one action item and three discussion items on the agenda for this evening. Our action item is the approval of a curricular resource for two suicide prevention lessons within the Health 9 course. Wisconsin first passed legislation in 2008 requiring schools to implement suicide prevention standards and curriculum. In March of 2024, this legislation was updated and specific requirements regarding instructional content were further clarified. In reviewing our Health 9 suicide prevention lessons, the Health and Student Services team found that we are not providing consistent lessons district-wide. This past March, the Teaching and Learning Team presented the information to the committee to begin reviewing our current practices and available resources in this area. In August, during Summer Institute, a team of Health 9 teacher leaders and the PE coordinator worked together to develop two lessons aligned to research and best practices that fulfill state requirements using publicly available DPI resources. The suicide prevention lessons that the team of health teachers and social workers created were presented at the last TNL committee meeting. On a vote of 5 to 0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the recommendations as presented. We request full board approval, and I so move.
Second.
Any questions about that? I'm not seeing any. Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Natalie Gren?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kelly Piasak?
Aye, passes 9-0.
Okay. Our first discussion item is literacy curriculum and instructional updates for the elementary dual language program. Ms. Gunnerman began by providing background information, which highlighted the many components of our multilingual program, English as a Second Language, or ESL, dual language, SEAL of Biliteracy, and our World Language Department. Ms. Gunnerman provided an update on the Teaching and Learning Director position that became vacant just before the beginning of the school year, and how a district leadership team has been created this year to support the work of this program. In regards to the literacy curriculum and instruction for elementary dual language, we have been aligning our curriculum and instructional practices with the science of reading. As a result, the board has approved the use of Benchmark Advanced and Benchmark Adelante for our students in the dual language program. This report provided an update on the literacy curriculum and instruction for the elementary dual language program. Information about multilingual learners, changes to language learning time allocation, and details on the curriculum were shared. Overall, the educators appreciate the common resources, and our students are now immersed in learning, reading, and writing in both Spanish and English. Our next discussion item is the Summer School 2025 review. The 2025 Summer School program was a huge success. As in past years, programming included academic and enrichment offerings for students in grades K-12. Highlights of the number of students enrolled and engaged in summer school learning opportunity were shared. Planning for the Summer School 2026 is already underway. The tentative start date for Summer School 2026 is June 15th. The Summer School leaders will return to the committee this winter to seek approval on the full Summer School program. And our final discussion item is the state assessment update. Statewide assessment data was released by DPI on the Wise Dash public portal on September 25th. Jamie Hinesel, Director of Academic Student Services, presented a summary of the data aligned to the district's three defined KPIs. Our first KPI is 11th grade performance on the ACT in the area of reading and mathematics. This KPI was met in the area of reading with a 3% increase, but not in math, due to a 3% decrease in the number of students meeting the college and career readiness benchmark. Our second KPI is 8th grade forward exam performance in math. This KPI was met, celebrating a shift from 44.7% to 51.9% of 8th graders at advanced or meeting expectations. This was a 7.2-point improvement, where there was no change observed statewide, holding at 51.4%. Awesome celebration. The last KPI focused on our 3rd grade students' ELA performance on the Wisconsin Forward Exam. District 3rd graders showed a positive improvement versus last year, with 58.8% of students meeting or advanced, 7.6 points above the state average. The committee wants to remind the board that these numbers have shifted higher statewide compared to prior school years due to the changes made with DPI assessments beginning with the 23-24 school year. We now have two years of data for comparison. Next steps will be to review additional statewide data for other subject areas with the committee and across administrators and staff as part of the district's commitment to improving student achievement. Madam President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, here in the Blair Administration Building Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Brooks?
One thing that I think is worth pointing out when we're looking at 3rd grade English Language Arts is how we're consistently performing about seven and a half points above the state average. I think that's indicative of the fact that even before the state passed Act 20, the Science of Reading legislation, our district was already doing something similar to that. We had already made investments in scientifically proven reading curriculum and kind of got a jumpstart on that. And I think that shows by the fact that we are continuously outperforming the state average by quite a bit, because we've been kind of taken the lead on this before we were required to by state law.
I think the numbers that we're seeing with our 3rd and 4th graders this year are just really exciting. And I think it reflects the full utilization of our new curriculum and that the time and effort that our staff and administration has put into the training on all of that curriculum. So things are really starting to click. It's exciting to see. Mr. Wad, did you have a question?
Yeah, and I watched the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, and Dr. Piasak, you had some very interesting data that you shared with the committee that pointed to some of that. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can get that data so that it can be published and shared with this group and with the public as well. I'm assuming that that's data that you kind of noodled out on your own, but it's available, and we could put it together, right?
Yep. I know that Mrs. Gunnerman and Mrs. Hinesel have more work to do. They had only about a week to turn that data around for us for TNL, so they focused on the things that were under our KPIs. So we didn't talk about things like science, where, for example, Meadowbrook 4th graders are 90% advanced and proficient in science. We didn't talk about things like our 3rd graders are 68.8% advanced or meeting in math this year, which is, again, the numbers have shifted because of the changes in standards, but, or in the definitions, but that's 14 points higher than the state average, where the year before we were something like 7. So we've doubled our margin over the state performance in a lot of areas. And so I think some of that will come out. We'll be looking at the other subjects. The data that I'm talking about is all in the Wise Dash public portal, so anybody can go in there. It's a little bit tedious, because you have to do static filters. You can't run them all simultaneously. You can download the data, which is another endeavor, but that's where I'm getting all of that data from. So, and the other limitation, which we talked about ad nauseam, is the fact that we only have two years worth. So there are some third parties that did some really good work to triangulate the pre-23-24 Forward Exam scores to prior years, and so we can use that as well, but it just is more work than it needs to be.
With those kinds of growth numbers, I'm looking forward to our DPI report cards with the formulas that incorporate both achievement and growth weights, being dramatically better this year.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see. But the one thing that does come to mind, you know, was we talked about the optimizing the future work, too. I would expect that those numbers of 6th and 7th graders who are on track for more compacted or accelerated math path are increasing, so I hope. Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. Anything else? Definitely a bright spot. Okay, moving on to other business. Are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Not seeing any. We do have a need for executive session tonight. We need someone to read only Item C. Mr. Harland?
Move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, Pern 1, Pern G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or it is likely to become involved, which is a former employee matter.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Thomas Harland?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Natalie Gren?
Aye.
Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Kelly Piasak?
Aye, passes 9-0. So we are adjourned to executive session. We'll take just a very brief break. Our next full board meeting will be on November 12th, here in the Boardroom, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.